Seven o'clock, and I'd like to call to order the October 7th, 2019 Board of Trustees meeting, and if we could all please stand for the credgilees.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody, and nice packed house. Thanks for coming, showing some thought on the process. We're going to move on to the roll call, and will you please let the record show that we are all present? Moving on to the approval of consent agendas, everyone had an opportunity to look at that?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to the approval of the agenda. I have no additions or deletions. Anyone else have anything to add?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on. Let's go to announcements and communications.
I have something.
Go ahead.
As most of you have heard or have seen in the mail, that we are having a November 5th, 2019 Tuesday election, and it will be a special election for Lyon Township, because the only thing that we have on it is one question for Oakland Community College. So with proposal 18-3 that was passed at the end of 2018 in the general election, anyone who wants to vote absentee for no reason can. So if you'd like to get on the absentee list, please let us know, and then if you are on the absentee list, we have sent out our voter absentee applications. So once you've received this in the mail, if you could sign in the big red box and sign in the bottom and return it to us, our ballots are in, and we will be mailing them to you. The only precinct that does not have an election in Lyon Township, Oakland County, is our Precinct 7, which is our Northville School District. It's a smaller district, but still very nice, five, 600 people, so they will not have an election November 5th, this November 5th, because they are actually Schoolcraft Community College, not Oakland Community College. So precincts 1 through 6, 8 and 9, you have an election, precinct 7, they get a pass this time. So the next election will be March 10th, so that will be also getting you an absentee voter ballot application to choose a Republican or a Democratic ballot, and then they will be mailed out to you, we're hoping, at the end of January, beginning of February, to get your ballot. So that is the next one coming up, and yes, because you might be signed up for absentee ballot at all times, you will always receive an application to let us know if you want a ballot or not. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else?
I have an announcement.
Go ahead.
Communications. I had had some communication with our planning consultant, Brian, over there about bringing to the board discussion on the township's development rights ordinance. It's Article 38, and we had started discussing, but basically I want to put this on a future board meeting agenda, and to discuss that particular ordinance. Basically, it's the ordinance that gives a property owner the option to sell their development rights to the township in exchange for putting the property within a conservation easement. It's through the state statute. So I'd like to bring that to the board for discussion next month.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Seeing no one, we're going to move on to the call to the public. This is where you can stand up and talk about non-related agenda items. We would like you to keep it brief, like three minutes, and give your address and name for the record, please.
Hello, I am Frank Socorfose, and this is my wife Elaine Sappatouris. We live at 24233 Terra Drive, South Lyon, Michigan. We live behind Dandy Acres. We received from our FOIA that we just submitted, the notice of appeals from the Township Zoning Board of Commissions. In here, they got approved for in 1975. The appeal was granted for the following reasons. Boarding of appeals stipulated the property cannot be used for a boarding kennel, word for word. Right here. A kennel does not belong in a subdivision. We bought the house, my wife bought the house, there was no kennel. I moved in, there was no kennel. They converted it to a kennel. We've been arguing this point for how long now, and I mean, we're going to extend to prove that a kennel does not belong there. And this is a zoning board of appeal from 1975, that they were granted a veterinary clinic on the property, as long as they didn't put a kennel. Now there's a kennel.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll take that in consideration. They have your name and address. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else like to come on up? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to reports. First up, Christina.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to recap a couple of really exciting things that happened in September. So September 17th, the Lyon DDA hosted the rest stop for the Great Lake-to-Lake inaugural cycling ride. So this is Route 1 that travels from South Haven all the way to Porcheron, and it involved a group of cyclists, about 50 of them, who took about a week and a half to travel along that trail. And we're excited to have been a rest stop along the way, and we had about 50 folks come through, and it was really cool, because the first cyclist who showed up was from Lyon Township, so that was nice. But it was just a great opportunity for us to highlight our community and share it with folks from all over the state. On September 20th, the DDA took part in its first historical walking tour in the downtown area of New Hudson. We had about 14 people participate. Jennifer Redfern Styler was our host, taking everyone around and introducing them to the history of the area, talking about the buildings and the people. We did make a respectful stop at the New Hudson Cemetery, where we talked about our Revolutionary War soldier that's buried there, as well as other soldiers that were involved in the Civil War and the War of 1812. We ended up back at the New Hudson Methodist Church, where folks were distributed a copy, a free copy of an author-signed book for the history of Lyon Township, and so that was really exciting. Also, Lowe's Home Improvement donated to us safety vests. So if you see a group of people walking around the downtown with these really highlighted vests on, it's because they're part of that walking tour. So we're looking to do another one shortly, hopefully in the month of October, maybe the end of October or early November. Also, Wholehearted Winery had their grand opening event on Saturday, September 21st. It was a fantastic turnout, they did a great job. I think people are really excited about having a winery in our downtown, so I would encourage people to stop by and check them out. They have a tasting room, and they have a retail sale room for the sale of bottled wine, and they're located at 56808 Grand River. Also, we held a ribbon-cutting event today for Frasier Cremations and Funerals on Pontiac Trail. Scheduling, we're also scheduling two more ribbon-cutting events this month for Amazing Pet Salon, which took over from Doggy Do on Grand River, and also Earthwise Pet Wellness Store. The economic development report for September is that $3,011,898 was invested in Lyon Township in new commercial developments. And lastly, the DDA will be holding its second annual information meeting tomorrow night from 5:30 to 6:30. This is an open meeting for folks to come and just learn about the DDA, and then we're going to follow that with our regular meetings, starting at 7:00 PM. We'll be talking about the 2020 budget, and we'll also be discussing another, just a variety of other projects that we have planned for the coming year, so I would just encourage folks to attend. And that concludes my report.
Very good, Tina, thank you. Any questions for Tina? Okay, moving on. Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's been a pretty busy month with some high-profile incidents that I'm sure you heard about. Our process for the hiring of firefighters is continuing and moving along quite nicely. We're still awaiting word from FEMA. I checked again today to see if we were qualified for the grant. There's, I guess, no news is good news still at this point, because they're not finished, but we have gone from 20 applicants to 13 interviews, and for firefighter, those interviews occurred last Tuesday and Thursday, so now we're just going through second interviews with those that are chosen to go forward. And the Assessment Center for Captains, the orientation is this Wednesday, and their Assessment Center will be in two weeks, on the 24th. We ended up with nine applicants, and we narrowed that down to five finalists for the captain's position. So once that process concludes, the idea is to try and bring captains and firefighters on together at the same time, and I'll be providing an update at the November meeting.
Very good.
Questions?
Chief, yeah, we had another thing I think we were going to mention last month, though. We had a meeting with the Michigan Department of Transportation on the 96 Flex Route, and it was a good conversation between you guys and MDOT, and we were able to get you guys access to the, all the MDOT cameras that will be currently in and currently installed on through their Clarus network, so it's going to help response time, and response location, I think, is the key thing.
Yeah, they were quite receptive, you know, to the suggestions, because we do have a long stretch between Milford and Wicksum, and we have a good mutual aid relationship with Wicksum on any incidents on the freeway there, so that was productive. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Lieutenant Venus.
Well, this is my official last meeting as your substation commander. After 12 years since 2007, it's been awfully great working with you all. It's not my last day, so I'll still be around, and I'm sure I'll say that more than once, so, but this is my official last board meeting, so just wanted to make sure if I don't see you, that it has been a great pleasure working with everybody here. Completed 31 years of service to the county, and 12 left in Lyon Township, and it's been awesome. Enjoyed working with everybody, residents, employees, people, it's been really good. Outside incidents, I know I passed along all the major incidents, we made an arrest of some, a couple of people for breaking into some construction trailers. One was at our own water tower site. Two of them, and that's where they were again, they were actually back at the water tower site, getting ready to break into it again.
And they finally got all wet.
And the deputies were checked, trying, they tried to check the construction sites as regular as they can, but it's impossible to do them all at once, but they happened to pull in, and there they were. So we were able to get, there were three people in the vehicle. All of them were arrested, and I think we probably cleared up some cases as far as south as Canton, so they were all kind of from down in that area. And then last Thursday, we had that fatal accident. It's still under investigation, but that takes some time after all the measurements and everything are calculated, and they do their thing, they figure out who was most at fault. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, Lieutenant, don't leave.
Don't leave. Lieutenant Venus, this is in our appreciation to you for 12 years that you've spent here at Lyon Township. It's been tremendous. Your leadership has been outstanding. On behalf of the Board of Trustees and Lyon Township community, we hope your endeavors for retirement are amazing, and I'm going to miss you personally, Lieutenant.
I'll be all about you.
You come up every day, you let us know what happened, and the day before, you let us know what's happening. You will seriously miss me.
Thank you.
You really didn't think you were going to get away that easy, did you?
[laughing].
All right. Thanks again, Lieutenant. Moving on to the Planning Commission, Patty.
Well, I have to follow that. I'm going to miss you too, Mark. I have been with Mark the whole 12 years, so we're, there is going to be a lot of tears when he leaves. He's done a wonderful job. But now to the Planning Commission meeting. We only had one Planning Commission meeting in September, and that was held on Monday, September 9th. We had three agenda items, no, no public hearings, but we had AP 1931 Dandy Acres conceptual site plan, which was denied by the Planning Commission. We had Everbrook Academy Site Plan, that is a new daycare center at Ten Mile and Milford Road. That site plan was approved, they had, they had met all the criteria, and we had AP 1936 AIS Construction Equipment Building Addition, and they are planning on building a little addition over there on the other side of the freeway, and they also met all the requirements, and so that was approved. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Great. Any questions? All right, we're going to move on to the ZBA. Anything at the ZBA, Lise?
Well, we had AIS Construction Equipment requesting a variance for building height variance due to the size of the equipment that they now have to repair. The machines are getting bigger, the repair site needs to be bigger, and I believe the, let's see, Dandy Acres, we did not, that was the one, yes. And then, and then there was a trash enclosure that they sought a variance to, so that they did not have to have a trash enclosure, enclosure, because their entire property is fenced, and both of those variances were granted.
It's hard to hear you. Can you hear me better?
Both of the ZBA.
You might need to move that to your... It's on. Keep close.
Both of those variances were granted.
Is it not working?
I don't know. I'll use my teacher voice, they were both granted. [laughing].
That works.
My teacher voice is good.
Okay. Any questions for Lise? All right, we're going to move on to the Park Advisory Board, and I don't see Robert here. Anything, Brian, that you want to fill us in on?
We discussed several items, one of which may warrant some consideration of the board for a purchase of a ice skating rink system for the park up here, which would allow us basically to fill up, they've got a system that includes boards and has a liner, and would allow us to fill it up and have some ice skating here. I believe Robert was going to present some of that to you, but, but we can do that another month also. Other than that, there was a recommendation, which is later on your agenda, for the appointment of a new parks board.
Yep, I have that here. Okay.
So those were the big ones. We're also doing some assignments in terms of completing some action items out of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Moving on to DPW, Bob, anything going on at the DPW?
Yep, a couple things, Jan. I hate to say it, but we're beginning our preparation for winter by turning off sprinkler systems throughout the township, especially the entrances to subdivisions and things like that. We have approximately 20 to 30 sprinkler systems that we deal with. We've been working on our cross-connection survey for the calendar year. So far, we've done about 450 surveys, and hopefully move on to 150 to 200 before the end of the year. And on the wastewater side, we're finishing up our escada system, and we're tying in a brand-new lift station. It's not new, but it was never tied in at the Esberry Park subdivision. That will be tied into the scada system, which just gives us a little more knowledge about what's going on out there in the system. So with that said, that's my report.
Okay. Thank you. Bob, anybody have any questions for Bob? All right, let's move on to some unfinished business. Artisan Pioneer Discussion, Water Discussion. Mr. Kestner, how you doing, sir?
Good. Good evening.
Evening.
Things are going well. The most visible thing is, is the water tower is going up in the air now quite nicely. The lathering was put on the last couple days. We've got one blue ring and one white ring left, and that will be completed. Hopefully, over the next two or three weeks, we'll be filling that and disinfecting it, getting it ready to go, and then we'll place the million-gallon tank online, hopefully sometime here in the next two or three weeks, if everything goes well. I don't know if any of you have been over to South Hill, but that plant's moving along nicely, too. The clearwell is completed, been filled, tested. The detention tanks completed, been filled and tested. We're ready to set the walls. The bottom slab's been poured in the backwash recycle tank, and we're ready to set the walls on it. The old pump house roof has been re-roofed, and the new treatment plant is pretty well complete from building structure standpoint, all the concrete's poured, it's been painted on the inside, roof's finished. So right now, while we're look, you know, looking at electrical and plumbing on the inside, which has already begun, and we're quite a ways along on it, actually. So South Hill's moving along. As of this morning, we started a crew into the old, the old Woodwind Plant to start removing piping and tanks in the old Woodwind Plant, so, all in all, things are moving along. Far as I know, Woodwind has had a couple hiccups here and there, but pretty well provided very high-quality water ever since we turned it on, and seems, seems to be working as, as planned. We do have one, do you want to talk about those two items right now?
I think you have, there's, actually, there's, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
It's coming up very quick.
So do you have any questions about where we're at?
I'm just curious, so you're starting to remove the old piping out of the old Woodwind Plant and prep for the softening components, is that, so that's still under DQ review?
Yep. That's, that's exactly right. We're trying to clean that plant out, so that if we can solve the waste discharge on the softening issue, we're in good shape there, so, okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to new business. The first is the appointment to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and this was given to me by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and they asked for this person to be nominated to the board, and I don't know if everyone's had a chance to take a look at it, it's Lynn Turek Reynolds. I don't know if she's here tonight. Oh, hi, Lynn. So has everyone had a chance to take a look at her resume there?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm perfectly great with this, so I would make the appointment to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for Lynn Turek Reynolds.
I'll support.
Question?
Go ahead.
Is this a new appointment or expanded?
It is a new. It's a new appointment.
A replacement or?
A replacement. Yeah, they need, they need some more people.
Very good, thank you.
On the board. All right, we have a motion and a support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, welcome to the Parks Advisory Board. Thank you. Thanks for serving, too, by the way, important. All right, moving on to the approval for the additional equipment to the pump-back Alright, moving on to the approval for the additional equipment to the pump backwash to waste on the water treatment plant, Mr. Kestner. And we also had another proposal that was given to the board about the water distribution center and has everyone got that in front of them? Okay, alright, so you could probably talk about them if you would please.
Right, so the first one, as you may remember, maybe not, let me refresh your memory if you don't. When designing your treatment plants, we put in a backwash recycle tank. We did this to not only be very in tune with being environmentally sensitive, but it, it actually saves discharging all that water to your sewer treatment plant. And we are able to bring that water back after settling all the iron and the manganese and arsenic and all the heavy metals out of the water. We're able to bring that water back to the beginning of the treatment plant and re-utilize that water. So, what happens in that process, over a six, eight month period, what we do is we develop a iron sludge, for lack of a better word, in the bottom of that tank, okay? And the initial thought was, you know, we'll, we'll do that the way we normally do it in other states. By the way, this is the first time this process has been used in the state of Michigan. But we, the way we do it in other states is we'll haul that sludge off periodically, pump it out and haul it off to an onsite facility. However, we come up with this great idea, I think it's a great idea anyway. You already are paying for 9,000 gallons, is it 9,000 gallons or?
Yeah, per day.
Nine?
Per day.
You're already paying for 9,000 gallons of waste discharge under your current agreement. So, my thought process is now, is we will put the water in the tank like we have been doing and we will settle out the, the iron sludge. And then, at the end of that process, we will turn on another set of pumps and pump 9,000 gallons into your wastewater system. It won't cost you anything to, to do that and it will cut way down on that sludge building up over time and having to haul it off to an offsite. So, it's a minor amount of money in the big scheme of things, $29,000 and 50, $29,056. It's, it's, like I say, you're already paying for the discharge now, so there's no added costs there and I feel that this will save you, I'm almost positive it's gonna save you money over time because you won't have to haul the sludge off anywhere near as often. And so that's why I'm recommending that change order for that, for that piece.
Does everyone kinda understand what we're talking about? I really think it's a good idea and the reason I think it's a good idea is it will pay itself back in no time. We'll have no hauling and plus we're already paying the RU fee.
Exactly.
So I, I would like to do this while they're working on the site. Anybody have any questions or comments or?
I think it's a good idea, plus the traffic of the trucks rolling through there.
Yeah.
You know, the neighbors don't like that.
It'll stop it almost completely.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I think we'll be able to keep that bottom fairly clean with this process.
Okay, so if you guys agree with that, a motion would be in order to move that forward if you so feel. This will be out of the Water Enterprise Fund also.
I'll make a motion to approve the Woodwind Backwash Recycle Tank Pumped Waste for an amount not to exceed $29,100.
Support?
Alright, we have a motion and a support, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Our next, our next proposal for the water system is the water distribution center that we've been talking about for quite some time. And this distribution center is a center that we can actually sell water retail for people that wanna fill swimming pools, for people that need drinking water. This water station will be a drive-up station that basically you can slide your credit card to dial in the gallons that you need and it will, it will fill tankers to five-gallon buckets to drinking situations. And, and it is a very, very quick paid-back venture. And the, the cost of it at first, and I'm just explaining how it got to where it is, was about $150,000 to put this, the system in. Well, as we got looking at the process, we okayed $150,000. We got into a situation where we were trying to bring the, the semi-trucks and the tankers in safely and out safely. So in order to do that, we came up with an idea to bring it off of 9 Mile Road and make a loop drive that would actually also connect the water tower door, so it would have concrete to the door and it would bring the road back out to Griswold. So the, the tankers would come in off of 9 Mile, fill their tankers up and then continue out to Griswold and drive safely straight out into the road. Now that added quite a bit of money because now we're putting in a full concrete eight-inch poured driveway and a pretty substantial amount of concrete. And that's where it's gotten to where it is. And that again, it, it is totally up to you if you wanna do this or not. So that's why we're bringing it here today to see if you wanna move this forward. And I believe, what was the bottom line on that, the final was 233 something?
233, 620, 690. And as John said, this will be a station that people will be able to pull up to, buy bulk water or they could even bring a five-gallon jug and they wanna fill a five-gallon jug of water. It's, it's water for sale with, with no attendant. You, you have the possibility of doing it several different ways. John mentioned credit card, the other one is anybody that wants to use the facility, they, they have an account with the township and you give them a PIN number and so they go and put their PIN in and they can get one, one gallon of water or 10,000 gallons of water, okay? And so it's, it's, it's a pretty neat deal, it definitely will pay for itself. You'll normally sell this water a little higher in price per thousand gallon for the convenience than you would to a normal household. So the payback is fairly quick and as John said, the, the price increased simply because of the way the, the driveway needed to be laid out so we could connect to both roads and that, that, that jumped the price up a little bit. But I still feel this, this unit will pay for itself very easily.
And that driveway was eight inches thick too, I mean.
It is.
We're putting in a four-inch concrete driveway.
Well, you get a trucker pulling in there and getting 10,000 gallons of water, there's a lot of weight there, you know, you can't have a cheap, you can't, you know, it's gotta be a stout driveway.
And we get, we get so many calls for water for all kinds of things here at the township and we, we've never really had a good way to sell the water. Down to the people that were drilling the boars, horizontal boars, they needed water. And, and so their, their idea of getting water was call the township and we have to figure out a way to get a backflow protector on a fire hydrant, we have to try to meter the water out to figure out how much they're using. And it was, it was pretty hard to, to know how much they were using and so they usually got probably overcharged, I don't, I don't know. We made sure that the Enterprise Fund wasn't lacking for money when they did that. But that's the reason and this is an unmanned station. And again, this is totally up to you and I'm opening it up for conversation if anyone has any questions or any concerns on the, on the extra cost, please feel free to talk about it now.
I think, I, I think we're all pretty much on the same page with this when it was originally approved as a part of that project, I don't recall anyone.
Sean, I can't hear, you wanna pull that up?
I need to face it, I guess. So I, I remember this being something that we all thought was a good idea from the beginning and quite honestly, if you're gonna lay the road out so it's safer and we're using concrete instead of asphalt, so we're gonna get durability out of it, then, you know, I think it's, it's, it'll be a return on the investment. How quick, I guess it depends on how many pools we fill up every year, but.
Exactly.
You know, certainly it's out of the Enterprise Fund, it's not taxpayer dollars and it will be an asset, I think.
Probably not many more this year.
Pardon?
Probably not many more pools will be.
Not many more pools this year?
No, but it'll take this getting ready for spring when they will be.
He can bring his five-gallon jug though, still, I'm sure.
I have had several calls for pool, filling pools if we had a source for that and I think Farmington Hills was the closest source. Any other questions or any concerns about this process here?
How much of the electrical is included? I see there's a 60 amp service, but I mean if we're looking at like the credit card machines or some, some form, is there?
That's low voltage, isn't it?
Is that additional cost beyond what's, what's loaded?
And that's, that's one thing as we get, get into designing exactly the machine you want, we need to talk about because you will get, if someone comes in buys a gallon of water and you have a 3% credit card fee, see how that can get real messy real quick? So, the better way is to, to set up a PIN system and have, you know, kinda like I've got EZ Pass, I don't know if that means anything to you guys in Ohio, in Ohio I got EZ Pass and, and I send in $50 and when I run out of that $50, I gotta send in another $50. And that, that, that's usually the type of system that works the best. But every township is different, every town's different and we'll just have to figure out what will work best for you. The machine will be capable of doing anything you want it to do, credit card, dollar bills, PINs, you know, there's, there's all kinds of options available to you, so. We'll just have to figure out what's best for this township.
We'll have to check it out because Chris, we're not allowed, we have a third party because townships aren't allowed to absorb the 3% or 2%.
Right, yeah, oh yeah, they, whoever's buying it has to pay that fee.
So we use Oakland County's system and so there's no ever fee to the township ever, but they have to pay that if they wanna use their credit cards. We'll have to see how that's gonna pan out with that. Maybe it's different because it's the Water Enterprise Fund, but I doubt it because it's still, we're just custodians of that, of that dollar amount, so, or that account. So, but we'll check it out when that time comes.
I think we discussed this about having cash there too.
Yeah, I don't think we want cash.
I would prefer not.
I too.
I, I agree, cash is not a good idea, especially, you know, where it's going to be located, it's still kind of a rural area and the sheriff found somebody trying to break in there the other night, so that's, you know, that's, it's still a rural area, but. PIN, credit card, something, something that's electronic where you can keep track of it, but, but make it easy to work with so it, it just ends up being an automatic and you don't have to think about it. That's the, that's the whole goal with this whole machine is, is that it's, there's no user inter, or there's no, you know, employees' time taken up by someone wanting to get five gallons of water. They just go out there and they get it and the thing does it automatically.
John, we've approved security systems for both water plants, new water plants and I guess I would ask.
We, we have for the first one and that is actually going.
Right, it ends up and running.
The second one will be.
I thought we have, we didn't approve it yet, but we will. Can we at the same time look at something, some sort of a security system for this, the water tower as well?
I don't think that's a bad idea.
Something simple, I mean, but if we're gonna have people injecting there.
They had Comcast out there, didn't they? Comcast was gonna put.
We're going to have Comcast out there, correct.
Okay, so that, that would be something we could do.
Get some prices for that.
One of them, I, I know, one of the options is when anyone pulls up there and, and starts to get water, a camera starts up, so it, it actually videotapes the person getting the water.
Oh, it already has that?
There's, there's that, there's that option, you, you have to get the camera, but I mean there's things we can do there to, that trigger, you know, that would trigger a, a, a security camera while it's being in, in use. If you want to have a security camera all the time, of course that's something we can do with the security company as well, but. Well, all these options, we'll, we'll figure out what's best for you and what works best and go from there.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I guess the, not to be too much of an engineer, but the, the base material under the concrete is included in this cost, I assume?
Yes.
Eight inches of stone or?
Yes.
Okay, somebody wanna move it forward or not do it or?
Do you want a motion for the difference John, or have we, have we budgeted the?
We budgeted the 150 for last year.
Okay, so we need a motion to spend the entire amount though at this point?
We have not spent it yet, it has not even started, so if you do the whole amount would be good for us.
So, okay, just because we priced the option out as part of this, but hadn't approved it yet.
Right.
Okay, alright, well I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for the nine-mile drive in bulk water for the new water tower at a price not to exceed $233,700 and this will come out of the Water Enterprise Fund.
I'll support.
Alright, we have a motion and a support, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks. And by the way, I do wanna tell you that the water quality that we've been putting out to the customer's been amazing. I've actually had people calling me and telling me, you know, you generally don't get that. They have been calling me and telling me that.
That's good news.
I had, I had a gentleman call and say he used to wash his car and they literally had to chisel the spots back off the windshield where they were done. He did it the other day and there was nothing on his windshield. So that's, that's, that's the amazing stories that, it's all good, it's all good. It's amazing water and it's only gonna get better and better and better.
Yeah, very high quality water right now. And when we get South Hill up and running and the new million gallon tank, it'll, everything will balance out and it'll be even better, so.
So very good and thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, we're gonna move on, we're gonna move on to the preliminary review for Cider Mill Village PDAP 1856.
John, as you may remember, I requested to be recused at the conceptual review because of a change in use directly behind my property. The office and commercial would have had a negative impact on my property value. Although I believe I can evaluate the overall plan in an unbiased manner, this modified plan will likely still have a significant financial and personal impact on my property due to the proximity of commercial and 52 townhomes on property that is currently zoned R1O. These create a financial and personal conflict of interest. I have consulted with the township attorney and I would like to request it to be recused from tonight's discussion.
Make a motion to allow Trusty Blades to be recused from tonight's discussion regarding Cider Mill Village.
I'll support that.
Alright, we have a motion and a support to recuse Lisa, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Alright, so we're gonna start this conversation, I believe with you Brian, are you gonna start this out for us here?
I will, thank you John. How I would like to go through this tonight is fairly, I'm gonna say brief, but it probably won't be brief, a summary of the review letter dated September 25th, 2019. I'm gonna hit on some of the major points and if you'd like me to stop on anything, by all means feel free to interrupt. So for those of you who are familiar with the property, we're talking about 264 acres of land at and around the intersections of Silver Lake Road and Kent Lake Road and Silver Lake Road and Pontiac Trail. The applicants, Cider Mill Village of Lion LLC are proposing to build 490 residential units on the existing Cider Mill property in addition to some mixed retail opportunities at the corner of Pontiac Trail and what would be a realignment of Kent Lake Road. You'll note from the plan that Kent Lake Road and Silver Lake Road, that intersection would go away in favor of a realigned Kent Lake Road. Of those 490 residential units, 384 are single-family homes. If you can follow the cursor, those include the units on the east side of Pontiac Trail, all of these yellow units and in the southwest corner here as well. In addition to those units, there would be 144 attached townhomes which... which are proposed to be located in this vicinity as well as the northeastern corner on this plan. And there is also an additional one hundred and six, single family, active adult homes broken down into fifty-four detached homes along Silver Lake Road and an additional fifty-two detached villas on the north side of Silver Lake Road. In terms of process, the conceptual review, uh, each stage of a PD is reviewed, as you may know, by the Planning Commission who makes a recommendation to the Township Board. The conceptual review is completed by the Planning Commission on February sixth of this year. At that point in time, there was five hundred and seventy-nine residential units proposed which included the, uh, the types of, uh, types of homes that are proposed here in addition to apartment units. The Township Board reviewed the conceptual plan then on March fourth of twenty nineteen where, uh, your comments were focused on the high density and traffic impacts. Uh, and the applicants at that time were urged, uh, to revise the plans and come back for an additional conceptual review. At that form, at the concept stage, there is no formal review, uh, there is no formal action taken by the Planning Commission or the Township Board. Um, it's just an opportunity for the developer to hear concerns and address specific points of the plan and for the township to give feedback. At the current stage of review, which is preliminary review, uh, this is where we are ironing out all of the details of a plan and working through the specifics. There's also a public hearing requirement at this stage, which the Planning Commission held on August twelfth of twenty nineteen. The Planning Commission comments revolved around concerns with high density of the project, traffic implications, stormwater management and buffering from existing residential properties. And, uh, in general, the public shared those concerns. After the required public hearing, the Planning Commission, uh, recommended on a six to one vote that the Township Board deny the proposed plan development citing, again, high density incompatibility with the master plan, traffic concerns and site plan deficiencies. Uh, which is, uh, based on that recommendation, that's why this plan is in front of view tonight. As an overview, the existing zoning on the entire property, it, today is R one point O, which is our least dense, single family residential district. The intended, uh, lot size minimum in R one O is one acre, uh, per parcel. The future land use plan shows this area as single family residential A, which equates to one point two five units an acre, which is, uh, aligned with our R one O district in terms of units with sewer systems. That would be the development density that we could get under existing zoning. For a plan development, there are several eligibility criteria that are applicable. The first of which is the presence of recognizable benefits to the public at large. And I'll note that the applicant has cited the following benefits as part of this development. Preservation of the existing Irwin Orchard and Cider Mill operation, relocation and realignment of Kent Lake Road, the provision of a village center or retail center which would, uh, include three existing structures from the Cider Mill, in addition to several new structures. And then the fourth, which is provide township ladder truck funding, uh, in an amount that is not included or not specified. In terms of the use of public services, the township engineer is going to comment on things like water and sewer, um, traffic and roads and stormwater, so we'll defer to Leslie on those items. In terms of compatibility with the master plan, I noted that the future land use map shows that, uh, we should be planning for one point two five units per acre on the site. However, this area, uh, and stretching up Kent Lake Road to the interchange, um, is, it was the subject of a focused review during the last township master plan update in twenty fifteen. And at that point in time, there are a couple of relevant items to this particular development. The first of which says that, uh, while this area is planned for a single family residential A, the township should recognize that a reevaluation of that designation may be in order if solutions to the road inadequacies were implemented. So, uh, as it relates here, the proposed realignment of Kent Lake Road would be one of those things that would, uh, trigger us to consider whether additional density was warranted. In addition to that, the master plan says that empty nester housing, which is, uh, for some of our, uh, our population who is, uh, losing children, uh, not losing children, but they no longer have children in the home, apologies. But we're looking for alternative housing that, that may not have large yards or things like that, has amenities that are close to home, uh, walking trails, those sorts of things that can provide, uh, provide our aging population with amenities close to home. The master plan says that this type of housing may justify consideration of single family residential B. And per the master plan, that would be a maximum density of two point O units per acre. Based on the parallel plan that was provided with the preliminary PD, um, that parallel plan shows a hundred and eighty-one units. And we've noted with the Planning Commission that we think there are a couple deficiencies that need to be addressed as part of that parallel plan. But it's in the, it's in the ballpark for what we would expect for a density given the existing zoning. That parallel plan takes into account things like wetlands and other natural features that cannot be developed. So, applying that two units per acre to the, uh, parallel plan density of one eighty-one, we'd expect somewhere around three sixty-two units on the site.
Brian, Brian, real quick, what was that number?
Three sixty-two.
Three sixty-two with?
That would be if.
With all the amendments to the master plan, that's getting everything they possibly can get out of it.
Well, that would be if every unit in the development were an empty es, empty nester type.
Oh, if every unit was an empty nester at two per acre, okay, got it. Three sixty-two, got it, okay, I'm sorry.
Correct, and that would also mean no commercial uses either because that's taking into account the entire area of the development.
Okay.
So, um, then in terms of usable open space, the plan does show that, um, or the requirement is that a minimum of twenty percent of the gross area of the site is, uh, is designated as open space. There's quite a significant area, as shown on the open space plan, of fifty-four percent of the site, a hundred and thirty-two acres would be preserved as open space. We do note that several of the, the areas included in this calculation on the plans would probably need to be pulled out, such as stormwater ponds, the, uh, the orchard area, the village center and rec area, those were all included in the open space calc and would have to get pulled out. We do still believe that they would achieve the open space calculation. In terms of preservation of natural features, the proposed development would preserve twelve acres of the existing orchard. And it would be operated by an independent, uh, orchard operator. At the Planning Commission, uh, it was Blake's, uh, Cider Mill, which, uh, came and presented or spoke to the Planning Commission. We also have several project design standards that are worth noting. The first of which is that in a PD, non, uh, non-residential uses can take, can occupy up to twenty percent of the buildable acreage of the site. And as it's proposed today, the commercial areas or the non-residential areas would account for about ten percent of the total net site area. Uh, so they would comply with that standard. In terms of density, we note that, um, based on the parallel plan, the proposed four hundred and ninety units is two point seven times higher than the allowable, so the request is a hundred and seventy percent density bonus. In some of the sixty foot lots, wide, single family lots, there is a distance of fifteen feet proposed between buildings where our standard for a plan development is a minimum of thirty feet separation. In terms of sidewalks and bike paths, there are, uh, numerous paths proposed as part of the development. At a future point in time, we would expect that a ten foot wide bicycle lane be shown on all of the, the public road frontage. Those are our major points. In terms of a conclusion, since the Township Board saw this plan last, that plan came in at five hundred and seventy-nine residential units. The proposed preliminary stage is four hundred and ninety units, so there has been a reduction to that number. However, during the Planning Commission's deliberations, they determined that the public benefit of the project was not, did not warrant the requested density bonus. In addition to the density concerns, we find that, uh, there was substantial concern about traffic, stormwater management, site plan deficiencies, those types of things which would need to be addressed before the board considers approval of the preliminary plan. Based on our findings, the findings of the other consultants who you'll hear from, the Planning Commission's recommendation of denial and public comment, we don't find that it's appropriate at this point in time to approve the plan or approve the plan with conditions. However, that allow, that gives the board really two options this evening. We would first recommend that the board offer the applicant the opportunity to address the plan's deficiencies better aligned with the township's intended development pattern and density. And if the opportunity to comply with the ordinance and tenants of the master plan is declined, we would recommend the Township Board deny the preliminary plan development proposal for Cider Mill Village based on those den, density concerns and plan deficiencies that make it difficult at this time to determine the true impact of the proposed development. With that, I'll take any questions?
Any questions from Brian at this time? Okay, Leslie, do you have anything to?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'd like to refer to my September twenty-seventh review letter, which is in your packet tonight. I'll just go over, um, some of the, the items that are concerned. There, there are quite a few items I will not touch on. Under sheet three, preliminary plan overall, the conceptual approval from the Road Commission for Oakland County for the realignment of Kent Lake Road shall be provided as part of the preliminary PD submittal. Though, we do have correspondence that the applicant has submitted to the Road Commission. However, we have not received any of the Road Commission's comments or concerns about the realignment. You will note though, the traffic study is in the packet for this evening and the realignment would improve the level of service for that area of the township. Uh, going on to sheets four through seven, preliminary site plans, sidewalks and bike paths are required to be provided along both road sides of public roadways within the limits of the project, including Pontiac Trail, Silver Lake Road and Kent Lake Road. Sheet eight, the utility plan, an off-site sanitary sewer extension will be required. It appears the intent is to utilize two onsite pump stations for the development which will discharge to gravity sewers and ultimately to the Township Pump Station One, which is not in conformance with the Township Sanitary Sewer Master Plan. Pump Station One is to the north of the project. As you may recall, when the sewer master plan was updated last year, only a portion of parcels that end in zero zero six and zero three five, which is known as the Irwin Orchard Parcels, would be serviced to the north under, um, to Pump Station One. However, the applicant is requesting that the entire development be allowed to flow towards the north, including parcel that ends in zero zero four, which is not currently in the district for Pump Station One. We have evaluated Pump Station One and the summary is that Pump Station One would need to be modified to accommodate the additional number of REUs to this district. Pump Station one point one would also most likely need to be modified as well as Pump Station Two, which is on Milford Road. So, a minimum of three pump stations would need to be modified for any additional flow. However, the gravity sewers segments A and C on the, um, master plan map would be able to, uh, take in the additional REUs. We do note in our letter that there are many items that we, we assumed number of REUs for the different uses, including the retail cafe, restaurant, because the sanitary sewer design information was not provided. Um, we also note that a water main loop shall be completed at the northeast corner of the townhouses and that there are numerous utility extensions that should, that should be added to meet the engineering standards. That's under number five, and so we list those out for sanitary sewer as well as water main extensions. Um, on sheet nine, number one, the overland flood routes for retention basins should be shown on the preliminary PD plans. Under sheet ten, stormwater management, there are numerous detention and reden, retention basins proposed as part of the project. For the initial submittal, the soil boring information that was provided dated back to two thousand and six. However, during, um, the review process, supplemental information was received. And so those comments are at the end of our report, but I'm gonna, um, so I'll wait till the end to comment on the ponds. Under sheet ten, number six, all of the stormwater basins would require four bays, which are also known as sediment basins, which could affect the layout for the plan. Uh, item number seven, if the south retention basin overflows, um, we question whether or not the downstream culvert would have capacity. We also note that the portion of the development to the north would outlet to a large wetland system and we comment that the downstream capacity of those culverts would need to be analyzed. Under sheet sixteen, the master plan and parallel plan summary, all basins should be designed in, with four bay, four bays and shown on the plans. We did not have enough information to be able to review the parallel plan for conformance, conformance with the stormwater sizing requirements. And there was not any details provided on how much wetland fill would be achieved, uh, for the desired layout. So, in the, the supplemental information that we received, um, was provided on August second. That's the soil borings, um, in relation to all of the proposed ponds. And that's a requirement in the engineering standards so we can evaluate the groundwater level in each of the ponds and whether or not the ponds would have capacity for the, for the engineering standards. So, what we found, and I'm gonna use the board here so I can explain it a little bit better. This is the south. Oh, that didn't work.
Right over here.
I just wanna write down the, um, the pond label, their names. So, when I go through this, um, it's easier to follow along. So, on the, the last page of our report where we, uh, go through the soil borings, the one regarding, the two borings that are in the area of the south retention basin show that the groundwater elevation is actually within the storage of the pond, meaning that that pond would not meet the engineering standards at the far south end of the site. Um, so that would require modification to the layout. In addition, um, the west retention basin also has the same issue. The groundwater elevation is above, uh, the stor, or it's within the storage of the pond. So, again, that basin would also have to be modified and could affect the layout. The east detention basin at the southeast corner, I think I called it north, the east detention basin, I'm sorry, I apologize. That one also has groundwater within the storage elevation of the pond and would need to be modified. Uh, the one that is mostly affected is the pond at the northeast part of the development, which would need a significant modification. Based on the stormwater management alone, um, I am not comfortable with the Township Board approving the preliminary plan. The basins and the stormwater management needs, would need to be revised to meet the engineering standards.
Okay, it seems like a lot of things that needs to be taken care of. Okay. So, I guess we'll, we'll move on to the, uh, to your, um, give us what you got.
All right.
And I would like, I'll be honest with you, we have a, we actually would like to keep these at an automated clip if there's a possibility of doing that.
Okay.
We'd like to, we wanna start enforcing that rule to all the developments to give them twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes.
We'd like to keep them in twenty minutes if possible.
Okay.
Is that possible?
If I can get this thing to work, you got twenty minutes. I'll try to do it in less.
Okay, thank you.
Brian is, what do I do here?
Yep, on the bottom, there's the red.
This one?
Grab yours on the left.
All right. Is there a full screen here?
Yep, push on the bottom, right.
Right there?
Right there.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. My name is Howard Fingerroot. I'm with Cider Mill Village of Lyon LLC. I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you today, and I will try to be as brief as possible, but in any case, less than twenty minutes. As you know, I've done a number of developments in Lyon Township, and what I've done, and what I think I've done, and I hope you agree, in each one of the developments I've done, I tried to be very thoughtful and come up with a win-win. Something that's good for us, something that's good for you, something that's good for the residents, for both the existing residents and new residents coming in. And I just wanna give you a few examples before we jump into Cider Mill Village. About a decade ago, right after the financial meltdown, there was a development Kirkway over on Nine and Napier, and this was at a time where things were real bad, builders weren't building houses, there was a bunch of SADs the township did that were going into default, home values were down, and I looked at it, and I was able to acquire a hundred and sixty lots out there and started building houses before anybody else came into the market or just as other people came in. And I think, A, it was good for us, and B, I think that was, that was good for the township as well. And then, fast forward a few more years, I looked through your master plan, and it said that you were looking for housing for empty nesters, not just the big colonials that were being built in the township. So, as you recall, I came to you with Legacy of Lyon on Ten Mile Road. We, we looked at the master plan, we looked at the zoning based on that, and we created a different product type than really was there in the township, and I think that was successful, and I think that worked out for the township very well. And then, thirdly, and most recently, the Oak Ridge subdivision. We see along Ten Mile Road and different parts of the township, there were a lot of big lots and big houses. And I looked at this parcel, and I said, you know, this environmentally is a nice parcel. It has a lot of trees, and we worked together, and we did a cluster plan where we had the same number of units, but we preserved the thirty-acre forest in the middle of the site, and I thought that that worked out really well. So, my point in all that is, I don't come to the township, I don't come to you with the ordinance and say, hey, approve me. I really try to take your master plan and your ordinance is figure out something creative that's a win for you, win for us, and win for the residents. And I really believe that Cider Mill Village is another one of these, and I think Cider Mill Village is fantastic. I think it provides a number of items that people are looking for, and I'll tell you the goal when we started out was, we knew that the Irwins were retiring, and there was a potential that the Cider Mill would close. So, how can we do a development that kept the Cider Mill open? That was a big goal. The second thing we knew, there was a traffic issue along Pontiac Trail, Silver Lake Road, and Kent Lake Road, and that had to be fixed. It had to be fixed, whether there's a development there or not, the intersections are failing, and if we can solve those two problems in a fashion that works, that would be fabulous. And that was kind of where we started two and a half years ago with Cider Mill Village. So, I wanna sort of take you through this, take you through our thinking, and we'll go from there. So, again, and I've introduced the project team in the past, I have with me Brian Wenzel from Atwell. They do our civil engineering and our planning, so if there's technical questions tonight, Brian will be able to answer those. We have a planning firm out of Austin, Texas, RVI, that did the planning on this. This isn't just your regular run-of-the-mill subdivision. This, I think, took a lot of planning effort, and we created a village. We created a village with a lot of multiple product types, a lot of price points, and again, I think something that's very good for the township and the township residents. And the last part of our team is Bill and Linda Irwin. They've, they've been here in the township for fifty, sixty, seventy years. They're working with us, and we really appreciate their support, and they've had input to this project, and I think that's been wonderful. So, I'm here tonight to request something very simple, approval of the preliminary PD plan of Cider Mill Village, okay? And I'm asking for approval because I believe, we believe, it's consistent with the Lyon Township master plan, and I believe we provide significant community benefit. I mentioned, too, there's more, as we go through this presentation, I wanna talk about the master plan, and I wanna talk about the community benefits. So, we've been working on this project two-plus years. What have we done? We've had multiple meetings with the township, the officials, the staff, and consultants. A lot of interaction, we've made a lot of changes over the time. We've submitted, in October of two thousand and eighteen, our conceptual PD. We received from both the planning commission and the township board inputs during our conceptual review, and I'll walk through the inputs we received and the changes that we made. And we did, we have addressed a lot of the public comments and a lot of the comments that came from the PC, the board, and the consultants. And then, lastly, we met with homeowner association groups that surround us to get their input and their understanding of their concerns. So, that's what we've done over our last two years. So, what did we do after conceptual, between conceptual and today, at the PD, at the preliminary PD stage? We reduced the density by eighty-nine units. The overall density is, we'll round up to two an acre, it's one point nine something, but let's call it two an acre, four hundred and ninety units on two hundred and forty-six acres. We eliminated the apartment component, the rental component of the project. Neither the planning commission nor you, the board, thought that this was the right place for that, and we eliminated it. We offered up municipal buildings on the northeast. Again, you had asked us to take it out, we took that out. We've increased parking in the village center. That was a concern, given the, how popular the Cider Mill is, so we've increased there. And with all this, we continue to propose all the public benefits that we initially Your planner and your engineer have gone through the plan, so I don't, there's, I don't think I wanna go through this in any detail, especially given that we wanna keep the time as minimal as we can, but as you know, this has five different product types. It has small lots for single family, it has large lots for single family, it has town homes, and it has two types of products for empty nesters. So, variety of products for a variety of different ages and different price points for affordability. Okay, so let's talk about consistency with the master plan. As Brian said, the property is currently master-planned, single-family residential A. In two thousand and fifteen, the planning commission was actually at the end of fifteen, so almost two thousand and sixteen, only three years ago, they looked at this part of the community, area five, study area five, and they said, there's a problem, I'm paraphrasing, there's a problem with the road network up here. So, because of that, we're gonna keep this as single-family A, recognizing that there should be a reevaluation if solutions of the road inadequacies are implemented. So, we're coming to you and saying, we are gonna fix the road. So, that means that it should no longer be single-family residential A. It could be, at a minimum, single-family residential B, or perhaps, single-family residential C. The second part of the master plan, which ties into this, and again, Brian has stated this, at, if you use active adult, single-family residential B density is appropriate. Okay, so, those are the two points that we took. Then, we looked at it and said, in order to do all the community benefits, what do we need here, and is it reasonable? And obviously, I thought it was reasonable, but it's up to you to determine, is that number of units a reasonable amount, given the community benefit? Because the community benefits, and we're gonna go through it, cost a lot of money. But, in exchange for that, we're fixing the road network, and we're keeping the Cider Mill in operation, which I think are two, two really big goals that I've heard consistently throughout this two-year process. I wanna show you what fixing the road network does, and we tried to come up with as simple as a visual as possible. This is how it plays today. The red means it's unacceptable. This is based on the traffic studies that are submitted, and it's, the left dot is AM peak, the right dot is PM peak, okay? So, you can see, both intersections fail in the current position, okay? If we go ahead and make the traffic improvements as proposed, this is what it looks like, and we have a traffic study that supports this, that shows that each one of our entryways at the new intersection, everything is green, AM to PM, except one intersection, one entryway at PM is still red, and we're working with the road commission. In fact, I met with the road commission two weeks ago, and I met with the head of the road commission today at two o'clock. So, we're working on a variety of different things to try to make the roads right. And they're, like every governmental body, they want what they want, but they understand the issues associated with the property, they understand the traffic issues today, and they're working with us, and we're trying to figure out what a real solution would be if you, the board, believe like I believe, that we are consistent with both, with the master plan, and then, again, the community benefits to get to this, the number of units that we're asking for, which is four hundred and ninety units. The community benefits overall, okay? We talked about the preservation of the Cider Mill. We talked about the relocation of Kent Lake Road. We have four more benefits. There is an environmental issue that we're gonna clean up, and it's not an inexpensive cleanup, and when I say not an inexpensive cleanup, it's hundreds of thousands going into the millions of dollars to do that, okay? It's arsenic, which is a remnant of pesticides that were applied in the nineteen forties and the nineteen fifties long ago. It's reasonably prevalent in southeast Michigan, and I've done a significant amount of arsenic cleanup. So, one of the benefits is we'll do the environmental cleanup. We've created a village center along with the Cider Mill operation. To the planning commission, I brought the Blake Brothers, Paul and Peter, who run the orchard out in Armada. They're very interested in running the Cider Mill out here in Lyon Township, and along with that, they wanted to participate and own the village center. They wanted to put in a restaurant, they wanted to put in a tasting room, they wanted to keep the sale of donuts and cider. So, they're very excited, but again, they're waiting to see, you know, the reaction from the township board. We wanted to provide capital township, township public safety funding, wanna make a contribution for a ladder truck. And then, lastly, we have fifty percent open space and four miles of trails and paths. So, we wanted to make a statement. We wanted to fix the roads, we wanted to provide a lot of benefit, and we really, really wanted to make it a win-win-win. Win for us, win for you, win for all the residents. And I think we've done this with this Cider Mill Village site plan. So, today, again, and I was, I'm asking you, requesting that you approve the preliminary plan because it's consistent with the master plan and all the significant community benefits that were given. If you think that the site plan itself is not in order, what I'd ask is that you approve the density, because we need to understand where you are density-wise to see if we can move forward with the project. And if you say yes to the density, but we wanna reevaluate architecture, we wanna make sure that the sanitary sewer's gonna work, we wanna make sure the storm works, all those things come in the future, but we need to understand that you're with us, that you want these benefits, that you think this is a fair and reasonable approach for the property. Quite frankly, there's, in order to provide all these community benefits, I can't materially change the four hundred and ninety units. If you're saying, take a few units over here, can you make this road? Of course, I'll work with you, I've worked with you in the past, I'll work with you in the future, but not materially. I can't, there can't be wholesale changes, 'cause I can't afford then to build the road. We're building through, we're gonna have to work with the DEQ, there's wetlands in there, there's different soil conditions we have to work with. Everything we're doing on these roads is expensive, everything we're doing with the environmental cleanup is expensive, and any other contributions is the contributions. So, again, I request that you approve it as submitted. If it's something that you want to refine the site plan, I would ask that you approve the density. And I think I beat your twenty minutes by at least twelve.
You did. You actually won it.
Thank you very much for listening.
I wanna open this up for deliberation to the board, and I generally never speak first. I always, I have utmost respect for my board members here. They go over everything so thoroughly, when it gets to me, I have nothing to say. They've answered every single question. And I wanted to start tonight because I really and truly am disappointed with the process. And the reason I'm disappointed with the process is because we sit on these boards as seven elected members to do the right thing for our township. We have also a seven-member planning commission. That's it. You've been to two conceptual reviews, and in the conceptual reviews, there was one comment that was very out there, and that was density. They all, everybody asked you, is there any way you can bring this density down? Is there any way you can get it closer to the master plan? I mean, we have, we have residents that's lived here for many years. I've lived here sixty-six years myself, I understand. I've seen everything that's happened in South Lyon and all its surrounding village, or the surrounding township. I've watched it explode, and I'll tell you, it has gotten harder and harder and harder to get around. So, I always, I sit here on these boards, and the reason I'm a supervisor here in the township is because, you know, you always get, you always start something because something happens to you personally, get you involved, and then you really take a passion for the township to try to help plan this township to do the right thing. So, we sit on these boards, and we have developers, and I know you, and you're a very nice gentleman, I have nothing against you, but we always end up sitting here with the developers telling us what we need, always. They come up here and they say, we've done the research, you need this, you need this, you need this. Back in two thousand and eight, we didn't really need all that. It about bankrupted the township, okay? And that was something similar, where we're actually banking the township on things in the future, and you have to do that, I understand. But I also hear, you know, consistent with the surrounding properties, and where does it stop? Where's the transition period between, or the transition zone between heavy, dense developments to maybe not so heavy? You're going from Martindale Meadows, which is fairly dense, but you're ending up close to Green Oak Township. So, we also have to look at our neighbors, and we say, okay, so we start making this density go all the way to Green Oak Township, where does it actually ever stop? I mean, where's the transition point? You're taking large pieces, large pieces of real estate in the township, and you're taking something that really hits home, the orchard, that's been here forever, you can go by there any Sunday and Saturday. It is the, it is full, everybody raves about it, so it's not an easy decision. You know, you say you've come for two and a half years. It's gonna take two and a half, this is a major change to our township, a major change. It will change our township as we know it. If it works, fantastic. If it doesn't work, who's stuck with that? You guys? You guys move on, and we as a township are stuck with the bad roads, we're stuck with the overcrowded schools, we're stuck with all those things that are left to us. And I'm just saying, every board that you've been to has had one common theme, they've asked you to try to drop the density, try to get closer, and I understand it costs money to clean things up. But I guess, I wonder why, when you go through two conceptuals on something this large, and then you come back with something maybe that you've changed, why wouldn't you go through another conceptual review? Or we can have an ID exchange without actually taking an up or down vote? I mean, now you bring it to us, we go through a whole list of engineering things that are not ready, we go through a planning consultant that tells us that, you know, it could be around 350, it could be to make it consistent with the master plan, you come in with 490. Well, I'll just be honest, I can't get behind that density, I just absolutely can't. And the reason I can't is, you're not really listening to us, you know? I mean, why wouldn't you come back to another conceptual, being that it's this large of a project, and say, what if we don't do the road? What if I take the road out? Is that something that you really want? Or is it something that's going to help the project, you know, have more frontage on different properties? It's also going to help the township, don't get me wrong, I understand it's going to help the township. But I can't get behind it. I'm just telling you, I can't get behind it, because it's so far over the top. I don't know the last time this township has ever approved 170% density. I don't know when that's been. And I'm saying, you do. I feel for the Irwins too, I want them to retire, but we can retire and still develop property under some of the zoning that everyone around it thinks that it's going to be. And I'm going to get off the soapbox, I wanted to talk first, because I never get a chance to do that, and I have a board that's amazing, and they always take care of everything for me, which makes my job very easy. But that being said, I'm going to open it up for the rest of the board to talk. Go ahead, anybody want to go ahead and talk?
Okay. Okay. I guess you had gone through your presentation and had picked out some things that you had addressed as far as previous comments, and as Supervisor Dolan said, the density was the main issue that doesn't appear to be, well, it isn't being addressed. And the 490 units is well over the density of the master plan. And I was part of the planning commission when we did the 2012 master plan, the 2015 master plan, and the statements made were basically saying, this area is inadequate traffic-wise to support anything above the residential A. Now you're bringing a community benefit of realigning the road, and that is a cost, there is wetlands, and there is, you know, permitting costs and just cost of construction. So, and you include that with all the other benefits that you have cited, and if you truly require 490 units to offset that, and we definitely don't want that density, I think there's got to be a trade-off, because at that point, while I appreciate the community benefits, it's just, it's not worth the density increase. It's just not there. And in order for you to make money and do your thing, and us to keep track of everything here, there's got to be some give and take, and we're not there yet. With that said, Wesley's review on the sewer situation is another topic too. You have potential pump station improvements, if you send your sewage north, which is not what the sewer master plan says, and if you go south, which is what it says, there's a cost there, and also a benefit for the people living south of there to, if their septic's ever fail, they have another opportunity to get into a sanitary sewer system. Again, it's another one of those things where it's the cost value of it, and I'm sure your engineer will be able to tell you if it's cheaper to modify three pump stations versus gravity flow to the south. One item I did notice too, getting the lot sizes, you had mentioned that the, you had a variety of lot sizes, including larger lots for single-family. The 90-foot wide lots on the tap parcel, the eastern parcel, are still 61% smaller than what would be done under the R1 zoning. So I guess I feel to see that as an estate lot. The other thing that I didn't like is the change from the concept to preliminary is the lot sizes. The 70-foot lots shrunk to 60 feet as well for your single-family residential. I think that was just the standard single-family residential. One of my comments was to keep the, make the lots larger in size as well, and you went actually backwards by shrinking the lots. You had mentioned too, in your presentation, about meeting with homeowners association meetings, which associations did you meet with?
To the south and to the east.
To the Martin Dale Meadows neighborhood?
I don't know the name of the subdivision, it's directly to the east.
They did meet with Martin Dale Meadows.
Okay, and the subdivision to the south?
Yeah, I believe there's maybe two, we met clearly with the one to the southwest.
Okay.
It's the western one south of us.
The western one southeast.
It's not actually west of us, it's south of us, but it's the western association.
Okay, that'd be the Newman Farms?
It's orchard edge behind, do you know where we live?
Yeah, behind us, Chris.
The back portion?
Yeah, the more, the acreage lapse, yes.
Let's see. I also had a question. You mentioned this time too, about the arsenic remediation, is that going to, is that throughout the entire property, or just the portions that you have slated for development? I guess the concern is like, you do present an amount of open space, are those areas being remediated? Obviously, I would guess the orchard itself, the preserve part would not, because you'd have to disturb the trees there, but...
Do you want me to answer it?
Go ahead.
Please step up and answer.
Okay, any of the areas that are part of the residential condominium will be cleaned up. So yeah, it's not, we don't leave it in the open space. It would be, the whole condominium would have to be cleaned up to residential standards.
Okay, so everything except the orchard preserve, because would be cleaned up?
So, commercial property, the orchard operation, they had a restaurant, they had a parking lot under their farmer's market, the DEQ, or now called Eagle, has different criteria for cleanup than residential. Residential is the highest level of cleanup, so we would do the highest level of cleanup in the residential part, and then the appropriate level cleanup, if any, in the, what's now the commercial, or what will be the commercial part. Everything will be, there'll be a plan set up, approved by the DEQ, we'll do the work, and then we'll get a no further action, we'll do it until we get a no further action letter from the DEQ.
Okay. And I think you might have mentioned this at the conceptual, but just to confirm, the recreation area, that is for the condominium itself, for the people that live there, that's not necessary, it'd be open only to their guests, if they brought people in, it's not like open to the general public?
Correct. Somebody has to pay, you know, the operating costs, so we, that's part of the homeowners association dues, so they would require it, that they would be the ones using it.
Okay. I guess, again, just to kind of summarize, it's still the density that's the biggest issue and the non-conformance with the master plan, and I understand that, you know, if you're trying to provide some of these benefits, at this point, I don't see it worth it. We've done a pretty good job over the last few years financially with the township and budgeting. We had, we have, I think for the last two years, have had in our budget a signal at Kent Lake and Silver Lake Road. We've gone through the capital improvements plan with the fire chief, and have, you know, we were able with the equipment village that the township passed, able to, you know, make payments toward a ladder truck too. So I guess, you know, looking at this, I'd rather lower the number of units and lower the community benefits as, to make things a little more equitable. And I'll be quiet.
You two are tough to follow. I'll be more brief. You know, I don't think anyone here, you know, we all live somewhere, we all have rights. I don't disagree that all of these homeowners, or landowners I should say, because they're just their one family trying to sell property for this development. But, you know, certainly they have rights, they have rights to sell their property, you have a right to come here and ask for approval, and we have a right to plan and master plan our community, and we've done that. And, you know, I think, and I said months ago when you were here, I think your plan's creative, it's just too much. I think this kind of density, this kind of activity is planned, but it's planned right out here to the east of where you're proposing it, as opposed to at that intersection where it's supposed to be far less dense, as we've discussed tonight. So it's been said before, but just in summary, the planning commission and the reviewers have all said the density is too high, 270% of what is allowed, or 170% density bonus, incompatible with the master plan, land use master plan, and the sanitary sewer master plan, there are traffic concerns, and I was going to mention, and Chris had mentioned it, you know, we have budgeted for a light there. Your two depictions of the traffic congestion didn't necessarily match up, didn't necessarily compare all the intersections further south, and some of them would be created by the development you're proposing, and perhaps that's why it's not an equal comparison, but I would assume that a traffic light would go a long way to improve traffic flow and safety at the intersection that you are planning to move, and I think that that would be a prudent step, because we have the resources to do that, as well as by our own fire truck. You know, there are other site plan deficiencies, stormwater issues, and, you know, those are my concerns and why I have a hard time foreseeing this here. I can't support it as it's been proposed. You had asked for us to approve the density, but, I mean, the density is tied directly to the community benefits and has to be compared to the master plan, so I think that's an impossible question. I think your plan looks attractive to the eye, but when you really boil it down, you start adding everything up, you know, the math doesn't work. So I couldn't approve the density, because that's really, for me, the whole issue with this is, I mean, some of it's land use, but most of it's density. So, yeah, I think, in my mind, you're quite a ways off density-wise from where you'd need to be in order to get approval. And that's where I'm at.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, this is the fourth time I've seen this plan, Howard, I'm not going to yell at you today, but I already yelled at you three times, so you get a break tonight. It's the usual, just like my colleagues said, it's density, and you know it's density. And I would hope you will listen, that you need to protect the surrounding residents with larger lots. I mean, again, you're by Deer Creek, who has acreage, you're by the back part of our subdivision, well, Chris and I live directly south of this development, but they have acreage, and I can understand that. They built back there, the Irwins sold that property, you know, and it's acreage, and they shouldn't have to, they should not have to live next to 60-foot lots. It's, again, I'm telling you, please listen to what our comments are. You need to protect the existing people, and also down Grace Ray, because those are large lots, those are large, people are already here, you have to be respectful to them. So, and after this past weekend, there's not enough parking in this development to keep any cider mill going, because they were everywhere and not, and I'm happy for you, Bill, it was amazing weekend for you, and I'm so happy. I mean, you want to see your businesses and your community flourish, and it was a big weekend, very big weekend. But, I mean, if you were, could, and are going to keep any part of the cider mill, there is not, you would have to have a lot of, you would, you had to see it this weekend, it was built in Kentucky, but it was amazing for them, and I'm happy for our community. So I'm going to cut mine short, because, like I said, I've given a lot of my comments before, so I can't support it.
All right, Michelle, anything to add?
Pretty much the same thing as everyone else has already said. I really felt that the road would probably be a better trade-off, but according to our residents and all the emails we're receiving, and phone calls, and people stepping in, that road is not the trade-off for the density. So, that's my comment.
John, anything?
Well, I might take a different spin, it's a unique, definitely a unique plan, nothing like it in the township. So far we've heard, people don't want that kind of density. I get that, I understand that. But I'm also thinking that somehow or other, this property is going to be developed, I mean, you can't have, you can't think we don't want anything in there, it doesn't work that way, so there's going to be a lot more traffic, whatever's developed there. I certainly believe this is, the density is too great. At least, you know, it may be great for that plan, but the plan, like I said, it's unique, and maybe it's just not for the township. Things I do like about it, I like the road, I like the variety of the housing, I'm not sure about the preservation of the orchard, what value that has, if any. And it's got some good features, but I still, I cannot accept the density.
See why I talked first?
Yep, thank you.
John, I have another, just a quick thing, and trustee Hicks kind of was getting toward it with the layout, but you know, we've seen a lot of these types of developments with the 60, 70-foot lots, but we haven't seen recently any really larger lot neighborhoods. And I know those would fit into this type of zoning, the R1.0, and those areas have, you know, transitioned mainly PDs over the years, and, you know, it's an opportunity, whether it's this one or other R1.0s, to get some of those, a different housing variety, get some of the larger lot neighborhoods, because we really don't have any available in the township at this time too. And the other thing I failed to mention, because I know I'd forget something, was the commercial aspect of it. I still, from the conceptual plan, had some reservations about the commercial component, and that's mainly due to our DDA. We're trying to develop our DDA in the new hot scenario and get the businesses there. The city of South Lyon has their downtown up and coming too, they've had some great improvements, and this site is like pretty much directly between those two downtown areas, and I'm very uncomfortable with commercial here too, because it's going to pull, you know, pull businesses away from those two cores. And then just on your cover sheet too, just update your overall site plan, because that's the color rendering that you had up at the top isn't, doesn't match up with some of the other plans, sets, plan sheets in the development, like the lot south of CBS.
So all that being said, does somebody like to put a motion up on the table for something? They're asking for preliminary approval?
Make a motion in AP 18-56 Cider Mill Village to deny the request for preliminary site plan approval due to the, I should say, and I would reference the September 25th McKenna letter and the September 27th, I believe it was, CES letter, and I would also reference the planning commission's action on the same subject, and also reference that the density is too high, it's incompatible with the water, I should say, with the sewer master plan, incompatible with the master plan for land use, that there are traffic concerns, site plan deficiencies, and stormwater issues.
No support.
All right, we have a motion on the table in support. I would like to ask if anyone from the audience has any comments. When this many people show up in the audience, I always like to see if there's any comments from the audience, as long as it's not a redundant or gone over and over and over. We do have a motion on the table to deny, and we have a support. So I'm just going to ask if, and I'd like to keep it limited, and please try to bring new things to the table, if you could, please. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Rich Saboda. I live at 61501 Silver Lake Road, the intersection of Silver Lake Road and Kent Lake Road. As I sit and listen to this discussion for the second time, I think some of the basic assumptions associated with the plan are due to a misinterpretation of the, of the township's development plan. I don't think there is a letter V1 that is anywhere in the township plan. Village is not the goal. Residency is the goal. And sprinkling a variety of activities when the orchard is vacated is inconsistent with the concept of residency. We've heard sociological descriptions of what people in their elder years are looking for in the way of a lifestyle. The sociological information is of interest, but does anyone talk to realtors what, what people are looking for in a way of a home? I do. We have some very fine real estate agents in our community. And what do they, what do they have? They have people looking for houses, just like the ones that already exist in South Lyon, and are continuing to develop. The, the concept of elderly people shouldn't enter into this. It's people, period. What do people want? To live in, to be a part of as a community. And I don't think that the plan that's before us, as I've described it, various kinds of living quarters and other things, activities and so forth sprinkled within it, I don't think that's consistent with what the bigger picture is about what people are looking for in the way of a community lifestyle. And I'm disappointed. I've lived at the intersection of Kennet Lake Road and Silver Lake Road for over 34 years. I don't find anything wrong with my lifestyle. And I think to try to engage in a departure from what we already have by modifying the concept of the, the development plan, and R1 development concept, I, I think, I think the train's headed in the wrong direction. I think more of the same is perfectly adequate. Ask any real estate agent whose market is in this local area. He'll tell you if it, if you build, we'll occupy it. I love South Lyon.
I think we all do. Well, thank you very much for, for that. We do appreciate that. Thank you.
My name is Bob Haas. I live at 60746 Deer Creek Drive. My property backs up to that southern part, and what I'm worried about is this realignment of Kennet Lake Road. I'm looking on the plot plan. I wish it was up here, but it, it looks like a residential street, you know? That should be, you're going to have vehicles traveling through there at 50 miles an hour. It should be, you know, and our people, residents couldn't be backing out onto that street from their house? Are there driveways going out onto that street? No, no, okay. But that, see how narrow it is compared to the rest of the Pontiac Trail? That, that's got to be double that width. So, look into that for me, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
I'm Bob's neighbor, Beverly Jokanen, 60614 Deer Creek, and I appreciate everything the board said, particularly, you know, look at the neighbors that are living here now, okay? My big thing is, is that we keep talking about this road, okay? If the road is as bad as it is, I think Lyon Township should go to Oakland County and get it fixed. That's what we pay taxes for. I mean, really, if these guys are going to make $2 million bucks just to fix the road off of this project, let's, we pay taxes to Oakland County. They showed us a study where that road was awful. It had all those red marks up there, right? Okay, well, let's go to Oakland County. We're on the very tip. We always get ignored. I call all the time about the snow, you guys. Just call, they'll come, okay? And so, we need to go to Oakland County and get that road fixed on our taxpayers' money, not on somebody that's making money off of a project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Well, I, I think that we, we are on the right path here. So, I mean, if anyone else would like to step up, I will let you, yeah, go ahead. Come on up. Come on up.
Hello.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I'm Julie Foley, 59701 Sunridge. I live in Martindale Meadows, just to the east of this proposal. I just had a few quick questions. Brian, we spoke earlier, and something came up. I was wondering, since it's proposed a 50 percent plus open space development, is open space clearly defined within the township guidelines?
It is.
So, that would not, or may not include the actual roads, the green spaces, the retentions, the walking paths? So, is that 50 percent maybe inflated?
There are specific areas that I believe need to be removed from their open space calculations, yes.
I, I think the 12 acres of the apple orchard were included, but that'd be a private commercial property. That wouldn't be open to the public, would it?
I don't know the specifics of the operation yet.
Fair enough. So, my other question, actually, if, if I may? Can I address the developer?
I would like to.
No, okay.
Let's see what it is first.
Well, well, I was just curious, because, living so close, I mean, we smell the donuts from Irwin's in our house, and we're there often, and, and we picked, I think, eight bushels of apples so far this year, and just come on over, we have pie. But, but I'm really curious if these specific 12 acres, what variety of apples, what type of phasing would that be? Could it be a sustainable business to have only 12 acres of apples to pick? And if you go all the way down to the southwest part of this development, a bunch of trees have recent been, recently been cleared out because they're diseased. And these are just something that, that rolls through all the trees. There's also maple disease that's rolling through, you know, slowly creeping through my neighborhood as well. I mean, I don't know if 12 acres is really sustainable. So, I was just wondering if the operators of Blake's from Armada were consulted about that, if it truly is feasible. My next point is the cottages of Turtle Creek to the north of this development, that was just approved with an over 55 community? So, I'm just curious, is another one really necessary, immediately adjacent to that? I know it's not exactly consistent with the master plan, but we have a few of these developments in the community, which that's fine. I, I don't have a problem against that at all. But I'm just wondering if we force them all into-
Against stone people, are you?
No. No, absolutely not.
I didn't want to be offended.
No, I, I'm just, my, excuse me, my concern is if we push all of that type of development into one corner of the township, I don't think it's a well-rounded picture.
Okay.
And my very last, very last point is the fire truck contribution. I know the township doesn't have ladder truck, and it is something we truly need, especially if we start building above three stories. And to Mr. Enlow's point earlier, maybe if the density is reduced, then the community benefits are also reduced. That's fine. But the thing that bugs me the most is that there isn't a specific amount listed. Previously, I thought it was an entire ladder truck in the very first go. I'm not sure if that was the case at the very first planning commission meeting, but I, I'm, I'm very concerned as a citizen with an unspecific contribution, because I have $5 here. Mr. Don, I'll give it to you now.
No, that's okay. No, thank you.
You'd be mad if I took that.
No, it'd be fine. Trust me.
I would take it.
I, I'm just, I mean, it, it could be $5, it could be $5 million. I, I, it's, in, in general, I'd like to see a more specific-
Appreciate it.
-community benefit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
I'll be brief, John.
Okay.
302 Angeles, 30176 Magnolia Drive. I don't know, I'm glad you met with the road commissioner, because it's only taken me three years to get the intersection of Grand River and Napier Road recovered. I meet with the road commission four to five times a year. I go down there. So, I don't know how you got down there and met him, but you did a pretty good job, okay? I'd like to ask the engineer something. You mentioned, you mentioned the, some pumping stations, is that correct? Who would incur the cost of redoing those?
The applicant, the developer.
Developer, okay. And I also agree with the board. I think the density is way, way overboard. 490 homes, it's just out of reach, just completely out of reach. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And thanks for bugging about Grand River and Napier, too. I echo those sentiments.
Okay, okay. We do have a motion for denial and a support on the table, and I would like to go ahead and call for, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion denied.
Thank you very much for the consideration. I appreciate it.
All right. Moving on to the consideration of the introduction of the conditional rezoning fairways of Canfield, AP 1928B. Basically, I need you to start this out, Brian. Go ahead and give us what this is all about. Hey, welcome back.
Okay. The fairways at Canfield, and you've got two agenda items, and I'd like to address them both at the same time, if I can, and then if we have specific questions on either of the processes or either of the item agenda, agenda items, I'm happy to address them individually. But the plan for fairways of Canfield is a proposed redevelopment of the Coyote Golf Course property. This is at the northeast corner of Milford Road and 12 Mile Road. The property is approximately 201 and a half acres inside. The proposal is to build 477 residential units on the property, and it is split into four different product types, the first of which is 120 single-family residential units, which are the larger lots that you see on the plan to the south and to the east. There are 60 proposed two-family units, which is the stretch that you see right here in the nor, in the northern third of the site. There's 241 proposed townhome units. These would have several townhomes in each. And then, there are 56 proposed three-story apartment building units. Those are the remainder. Now, this proposal takes a little bit different approach than the case that was just heard, which was a PD. This approach takes a couple processes, and we kind of combine them together, and they are all interrelated to one another. The planning commission, when they reviewed the plan, considered three different requests. The first was an amendment to the future land use plan. The second was a conditional rezoning from R1.0, single-family residential, to MU, mixed use. And as part of that, the maximum density of development proposed was 2.37 dwelling units an acre on the concept plan. And then, the final consideration is special land use review for a single-family development. And the reason for that special land use review is, although the area is planned and zoned today for large lot, single-family residential, a change to the mixed-use district puts single-family homes in the special land use category. The planning commission reviewed and considered all of these topics and held a public hearing for the conditional rezoning and the special land use plan at their August 26th meeting of this year. At that time, they determined that the master plan amendment was not supported, and the current future land use plan, which indicates one-acre zoning, was still appropriate. And so, they basically found that the property was appropriately zoned and planned. The planned density should continue to be for the single-family residential, A, for approximately 1 to 1.25 acres dwelling units per acre. Based on that determination, then, they looked at the conditional rezoning, which was proposed, and determined that because the future land use plan accurately reflects, accurately reflects the current thinking of the property, that the conditional rezoning to a mixed-use land use designation was not appropriate, and therefore, then, the special land use was not, not appropriate either, because the mixed-use designation was not adopted, so, or recommended for adoption. Any questions? I'll stop now and ask if there are any questions on that process and how those three kind of tie together from the board. Anything at this point?
Anybody have any questions? More help?
So, that being the background, the only two steps out of those three that require township board determinations are the conditional rezoning and the special land use, because those are both recommendations from the planning commission. In terms of the conditional rezoning, there are several things that are submitted as part of that conditional rezoning application. The first is a site plan, a conceptual site plan, which you see up in front of you, and you have a rendered packet in front of you. That plan specifies essentially what is a maximum density that we would be permitting for this conditional rezoning process. If you remember one that came before you recently, which was the Pearl Development, where you're specifying a number of units that get developed, and then certain things may get tweaked here and there on the site plan to make things work. The same kind of concept applies here, where you may lose a unit here, you may have to tweak a road alignment, that sort of thing at site plan review, but the developer would be held to that maximum density of 2.37 units per acre gross, or 2.48 units per acre net. This plan proposes open space in the amount of almost 69 acres, which is 39.1- point one percent of the total land area. It includes some amenities, like open spaces, a central park, um, several common areas sprinkled throughout the site, all of which would be maintained by the associations, uh, of which there would be several, uh, broken down into the single-family and two na- two-family neighborhoods, the townhomes, and the apartments. As it's proposed, the single-family, the roads moving through the single-family development would all be publicly owned and operated by the road commission. The road network within the townhome and apartment neighborhoods would be privately owned and maintained. There are architectural standards proposed, uh, there are architectural drawings indicating, they're in the packet, that indicate the, um, anticipated character of those units, and the single-family design standards are also included. I also note that the land at the southwest corner of the site, and I apologize, our review letter, uh, inaccurately called it the southeast corner, but at the southwest corner of the site, which is right at the corner of Milford and Twelve Mile Road, there is an area of the site called out for future public use, or open space. And the application notes that the school district would be given first right of refusal to acquire that land, uh, in the event that they needed it for an elementary school, and if not, it would be offered to the township for park use, or reserved as permanent open space for the development. In terms of conditional rezoning approval criteria, there are really two things that we look for. The first would be an enhancement to the project area. We note in our review that there is the potential, based on how this is designed, with all of the heavy, uh, heavy density at the north and northwest corner of the site, transitioning to single-family development at the south and southeast side of the site, um, to provide a transition from what is industrial and research-type land to the north, and the existing single-family, uh, R one O zone to the east and the south. So, from that perspective, um, the design is a good one, in that it is putting the least dense portions of the design, where the least intensive use is surrounded. The planning commission voiced pretty vocal concern about issues with traffic on Milford Road, particularly having northbound, um, and I'll defer to Leslie to talk about the traffic impact study that was provided. But in terms of the public interest is the other, uh, criteria that we look at, um, when it comes right down to it, the planning commission was very concerned about that density that is proposed, the two point three seven units per gross acre, which is more than double what the permitted density is today, uh, as well as nearly double what the planned density is on the site. There are a few rezoning criteria that I want to talk about, the first being, uh, whether or not the proposed development would further the implementation of the adopted master plan. Similar to the previous development that we discussed, there was, uh, a special focus in the twenty fifteen master plan update, on this particular site, and the Milford Road corridor in general. And at that time, and in that plan, there's specific language that finds that the Coyote Golf Course is appropriate to continue to be planned for large lot, uh, R one O-style Based on that, we don't feel that the mixed-use designation and the proposed density follows through on that master plan implementation. There is an additional consideration for whether or not the proposed amendment would further the comprehensive planning goals of the township, and I, I note that, um, one of the larger concepts of this plan is that, uh, previously, there was some consideration for a development on the properties directly north, and the future land use plan itself says that, uh, on the property to the north of this, there, we should be considering some higher-density residential options. And given some of the environmental concerns that have been brought forth on the property to the north, um, there's the idea that additional rooftops along Milford Road, and within a proximity to New Hudson, can support, uh, businesses, restaurants, activity in New Hudson. There is concern from the planning commission that this additional quarter mile to half mile of walking distance to downtown is not something that would actually get used, and so it's not necessarily, uh, supportive of that goal, to enhance the number of rooftops in proximity to New Hudson. There are several other standards, um, if you have specific questions, I will go on to, I will go into detail on them, but I would, uh, conclude by saying, given the planning commission's direction not to amend the future land use designation at the current time, retaining the density, or the planned density of one to one point two-five units an acre, the conditional rezoning does not achieve all of the standards required for rezoning. Uh, the sig- uh, the significant concerns about traffic along Milford Road, uh, in addition to some concerns that Twelve Mile Road would not be paved as part of this development, as it's planned, um, I'll support the planning commission's recommendation to the board of denial of the conditional rezoning. I'll continue and say that, if the board agrees and does not find it appropriate to rezone the property, based on the conditions offered by the applicant, uh, the special land use request for single-family, uh, for single-family housing as part of this development won't be supported either, although it's a, it's kind of a tricky situation, because we want the large family, large lot residential, uh, it just doesn't need to be approved as part of a special land use in the mixed-use district.
Okay, so anybody have any questions about that? Anyone? Okay. Um, Leslie, you have anything to add?
Yes. I'd like to refer to our September twenty-seventh review letter, which is in your packet. Um, item number one, there are several units that have regulated wetland within those, which is prohibited by township ordinance. Um, also, the twenty-five-foot wetland buffer are required to be shown. I'm going to come back to item number three regarding the traffic study review. Some item, uh, item number four, stormwater management items would be addressed if the applicant submits a site plan for review, and we list items that would be required at that time on the second page of our letter. Item number five, we analyzed, uh, the sanitary sewer service to this parcel. It's sanitary sewer offsite would have to be, uh, constructed along Twelve Mile Road to the southwest of the site, um, in order to serve it. So, when I was looking at this plan, I reviewed that entire area, north of Twelve Mile, um, and west of Spalding, to see what would realistically flow to the south, which would flows all the way to Eleven Mile Road in Spalding, there's a large pump station there, that would serve this. Um, that pump station I did not analyze, but I did analyze the gravity sewer along Spalding Road, and I do think it would have capacity to serve this development, if the board was inclined to approve the conditional rezoning and special land use. The downstream pump station, though, we would have to review in further detail if the site plan is submitted. Now, going back to item number three regarding the traffic study, a traffic study was, uh, provided. GHD was, uh, hired as a subconsultant to my firm, to review the traffic study, and there were numerous concerns, mainly that all of this, and all of these additional units are proposed to enter on Milford Road with zero mitigation. So, your level of service is, is going down, and that goes all the way up to Grand River. And so, repeatedly through the GHD review letter, you can see that mitigation is not provided on Milford Road. So, at this time, that would be my largest concern from an engineering perspective, with the proposed conditional rezoning and special land use.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Leslie at this time?
Just, uh, you, you had mentioned the sanitary sewer, they, this, this site has two hundred and fifty REUs allotted to it?
That's right.
And they're asking for four hundred and seventy-seven?
Approximately, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions at this time?
You know, one other thing, though, just to comment on this parcel, too, is not, the township is not obligated to serve this parcel, under the sewer master plan, they have not contributed to, um, any construction of your sanitary sewer system, so, that is something to note as well.
All right, is the applicant here? Do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, I do.
Can we keep it in twenty minutes?
I, I can't keep it under eight minutes, but I will keep it under twenty, maybe even fifteen.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Paul LeBlanc, from PLV Planning. I'm here on behalf of Lombardo Homes, and we just want to, um, give you some background on the project, and, uh, address the comments we've heard from both staff and from planning commission to date, and how we intend to address those, and then, uh, hopefully answer whatever questions you might have. So, here's the team, Lombardo Homes would be the developer, uh, Seber Keese is engineering, deep, uh, deep planning and design, has, uh, had a major role in the, uh, planning and layout, and my background is in community planning and zoning. We're here to explain what we want, uh, address those concerns, present the project in a little more detail than what, uh, Brian was, was able to cover, and foremost, to listen. And this is what we told the planning commission, uh, when we attended the meeting back in August, that, in fact, when I started the presentation, I emphasized that, um, given the complexity of the project and the detail, that we weren't there to ask for a decision that night. We wanted to listen, we knew there'd be comments and, and feedback, and we were hoping to take that and refine the plan to whatever extent, uh, was necessary or, or possible. We hope to do the same with you tonight. So, our request, as Brian said, is for conditional, uh, rezoning. Unlike traditional rezoning, uh, conditional rezoning, um, allows for you, for us to present proposed conditions, and for you to approve the rezoning based on those conditions. Unlike conventional rezonings, where, as a planner, I always advise my municipal clients, don't look at a site plan, just consider the rezoning. With conditional rezoning, it's different, you want to know what is proposed. And so, we've outlined a number of conditions, um, as both, uh, consultants have indicated, as one of those conditions, the maximum number of units on this site would be the four seventy-seven that's shown on the plan. If we get approval of the conditional rezoning, we still have to go through site plan approval, and all the other development reviews and approvals that would otherwise be necessary. So, if we find that some lots, uh, are in wetlands, and I think our engineer would disagree, but we'll save that for later time, or if there are other issues that limit some of the, uh, units that are proposed, then we would be able to reduce the number of units, we'd never be able to, uh, increase them beyond what was proposed. So, most of these conditions are based on that conceptual site plan, and I do emphasize conceptual, because rather than go into a lot of engineering of sewer and water systems, and, and grading plans, and all the rest, uh, until we know that the rezoning and the concept and the conditions are accepted, uh, there's not much point in, in expending a lot of time, energy, and expense, uh, to develop a detailed plan. Again, as Brian indicated, the mixed-use district is a little different, it allows all forms of residential by right, except for single-family. Single-family, uh, is a special use, so that would be part of our request. The initial comments we received, both from staff, planning commission, and, and the general public, uh, really came down to about six major areas. The big one, I think, is conformance with the master plan, and I'll go into that one in some detail as I proceed, but I want to emphasize to you, that we recognize that what is proposed here does not comport to the future land use map of your master plan. But I would hasten to emphasize that the master plan is much more than that colored future land use map. I'm a planner, in my career, I've written dozens of master plans, probably more than Brian, because I'm a lot older than he is. The point is, that the meat of the master plan is the goals and the recommendations and the policies in that document, that we're very confident this project supports fully. The future land use map is intended to be a graphic illustration of how those goals, policies, and recommendations are applied to specific areas of the community. Density is an issue, that's part of the master plan issue. Traffic will address, uh, compatibility with adjacent single-family, uh, as Brian noted, the way the plan is laid out, the single-family in the proposed development, a but, well, actually, open space abuts existing single-family to the south and east, but beyond that, uh, it's all single-family lots. And sewer, stormwater, again, are details that, uh, would be, uh, addressed, uh, with site plan review. So, the master plan, um, the master plan acknowledges that the trend all over the country is golf courses are going out of business, and I think the, the plan wisely noted that this is a potential, and in the event that it does happen, here's a proposed land use and density for that property. The plan talks about supporting downtown New Hudson, we actually have a letter from the Downtown Development Authority, uh, from last year, supporting this project, and indicating the desirability of the mix of, of housing types, as well as the density, and providing more rooftops to support the area. One of the big recommendations in your master plan is the concept of transitional zoning, and the plan even says, "The township hasn't done a great job," and I'm paraphrasing, so don't take offense, um, "but the township hasn't done a great job in the past of transitional zoning and land use planning." And the whole concept be, behind the existing future land use map, is that you had proposed, and I'll show you the map in a minute, you had proposed mixed-use development on the property to the north of this parcel. Uh, mixed-use, according to your plan, could be up to twelve units per acre, uh, with the golf course property to the south being lower density, and then transitioning even further, to even lower density to the southeast. We have no quam, no quarrel, uh, with that concept, but, uh, I think what recently was determined, uh, uh, with regard to the, um, uh, property to the north, the concept now doesn't fit, uh, the reality of what can be done on the, the adjacent property. Housing options, again, the DDA supported a variety of housing. Walkability, uh, one of the conditions that we proposed as part of the rezoning is to extend, uh- Walkability, one of the conditions that we proposed as part of the rezoning is to extend pathway along Milford Road from the property all the way to New Hudson, as well as sidewalks within the development to ensure that there is walkability and connectivity throughout the project. Another big point to consider, and this goes to the master plan, I suspect when your plan was prepared five years ago or longer, no one anticipated the environmental concerns regarding the Wall Bridge property, or more accurately, the aluminum plant across the street from the Wall Bridge property. Your plan, as most master plans do, recognizes that change happens, that when you're preparing a plan, you can't possibly anticipate every scenario, everything that might happen that might impact that plan. So your plan notes that change is constant, and the plan needs to be continually reviewed and updated as necessary to address changes. The big change that affects our proposal is that the Wall Bridge property, zoned industrial now, the mixed-use project that was approved was determined to be infeasible because of environmental conditions. So going back to the transitional concept, now the golf course site is immediately adjacent to properties zoned industrial and likely to remain in some form of non-residential use. So we're going from a non-residential, many acres, to very low-density residential on the golf course property. What we're asking for is that we kind of flip what had been approved as part of the future land use map and put the mixed-use on this site, so there is a logical transition from industrial to the golf course property to the much lower, single-family residential. So in terms of impacts, the mixed-use project on the Wall Bridge property was approved for up to 878 dwelling units, or a density of 6.1 units per acre. The golf course property, as planned, would allow up to 250 single-family homes. So in total, based on the plan and based on what was approved, you might have over 1,100 dwelling units on those two properties as planned and approved. What we're asking for is 477 dwelling units, period. With regard to traffic, always a concern, every project, anywhere I've ever worked, traffic is typically, if not the number-one concern, in the top two. No different here. Under the project that was approved on the Wall Bridge site, their traffic projections were for 7,200 vehicle trips. The potential 250 units on the Coyote Course, as master planned, could generate about 2,400 trips. So combined, what's planned and approved would be close to 10,000 vehicle trips per day on those two properties. What we're proposing, based on our traffic study, is about 3,800 vehicle trips per day on the golf course property with 477 dwelling units. Now admittedly, when the Wall Bridge property develops, even if it's non-residential, there will be additional traffic, but that additional traffic is unlikely to be close to what would have been generated by their mixed-use development. In terms of compatibility, the property to the north is zoned industrial. The property to the west, across Milford Road, is developed as a mixed residential project at a density of 2.8 units per acre. Our proposed density is less than that. At the Planning Commission meeting, it was brought up that the Mill River project across the street isn't relevant because that was court-ordered. Well, however it got there, it's there. The reality is that when we look at a land use plan, or when we look at a rezoning, we look at compatibility, we have a mixed-use project of similar type, but even higher density, right across the street. We have non-residential zoning directly north of us. The two other residential areas to the east and south are both approximately one unit per acre. Again, you can see from the plan that none of those properties directly abuts a single-family lot. They're buffered by open space, and they're, the closest development is single-family in all cases. So to describe the project, we've talked about location, mixed residential, the units closest to the north property line, there are 56 multifamily units, 241 townhomes south of that, 62 family units south of that, and then 120 single-family units making up about half of the entire site. The southwest corner is set aside as future school property if they want it and need it, or if not them, the township would have the next right of refusal as a park. And if township chooses not to take advantage of it, then it would be simply set aside as permanent open space. A lot of amenities proposed, pool, clubhouse, trails, park areas available to residents of the various different residential components. In density comparison, again, the Wall Bridge property to the north was approved at up to 6.1 units per acre. Our gross density would be 2.37, or net density of 2.48, so significantly less than half of what had already been approved. And the different housing types. So in summary, conditions have changed, and I think that is critical. I think the recommendations and goals in your plan are still solid, and this project certainly addresses those recommendations and goals and fulfills them. The problem is that future land use map, but again, because of the changed conditions, the future land use map is no longer relevant. There's a very appropriate transition and buffer throughout the development with surrounding properties. It's compatible with all surrounding uses. There is less traffic generated by this development than you've actually planned for in your master plan. There are fewer dwelling units than actually planned and approved, and we support the New Hudson businesses, and we have a letter to that effect from them. So maybe I did do it under eight minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for the quick. All right, then I'd like to open it up, and anyone who would like to start their questions, please. You want to start, Leece?
Sure.
All right, go ahead.
So I, in looking at the McKenna letter dated 9/25/19, I don't want to reread the letter, but some of the items that were of concern to me were the general rezoning considerations. Number one, which was on page seven, that this would not be consistent. Number four, will the amendment correct an inequitable situation? And our answer, through our planner, is that the property's existing designation allows for full development, which would be consistent with surrounding land uses, and that is item four on page eight of the McKenna letter. And another item on page 13, that this reinforces the planned character and density desired for the property as low-density, single-family homes. So the recommendation from the Planning Commission, was that as a recommendation of denial?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. So that was an item that I thought was relevant. And our engineering letter had several items of concern, from item five on page one, that this may limit the type of development and/or the density of residential developments that could be approved in the future. So I think there was a phrase of, you know, first come, first served, and that becomes a problem. And then essentially, everything on page two of our engineering letter. So I will not read that. And although I do have a big concern with the master plan and compatibility of adjacent single-family homes, I do want to at least address that I appreciate that you have a great deal of screening along 12 Mile for the homes that are on the south side of 12, and heavy screening and preservation to the east, which would be adjacent to the larger lot residences there. So that is something I think you did a very good job at doing and protecting those existing residents from that project site. I also like that in your planning, that your single-family is the transition from existing single-family homes on the south, and that the townhomes and apartments are planned on the north side where there are no existing single-family homes. So I do appreciate significantly those two items, but the McKenna letter and the engineering letter cast a bit of a shadow over those.
May I address that?
Sure.
I think, I agree. But I think in both the Planning Commission comments, and correct me if I'm wrong, but as I recall in Brian's letter, the focus really was on the future land use map. And I don't disagree that we're not consistent with the recommendation on that map. But I think Brian's letter also notes many of the things that I've said here, that the project would provide a great transition, it's supported by the DDA, it provides a mix of housing, and a lot of the recommendations that are in the text of the plan. Frankly, if, I'm going to go out on a limb here, but I suspect if the Wall Bridge property had been developed as approved, we probably wouldn't be here, certainly not with this plan. If we were here, we'd come in with something closer to what was envisioned on that future land use map. But I think the situation with the Wall Bridge property really is a game changer. And to adhere to very low density on the golf course when we have industrial to the north and likely will stay industrial or some non-residential category, then you're ignoring the transition recommendation of your plan. And that's one of the key things for us. And as far as the engineering, you know, as I said, I think at this stage with a rezoning, we didn't go into a lot of detail on where the sewer is coming from or the drainage. I mean, we know, if we can't work out those details, you can give us rezoning, but we ain't going to develop anything. So those are things that can come later. And the traffic, we did meet with our traffic engineer after we got the consultant's letter, and he said, you know, "We fully intend to mitigate what we need to, but the township doesn't control the roads. We want to meet with the road commission and find out, number one, what would they accept, and number two, what would they want us to do?" You know, we can propose a lot of things, but the road commission can say, "No, not on our road. The signal spacing is too close, or we don't want you screwing up with the timing of our signals," or whatever it might be. So again, we know that that's an issue. But as I pointed out here, the overall traffic to be generated is less, substantially less, than what was already approved on the Wall Bridge site, plus what was master planned for this site.
Are you good, Leece?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, John, do you have anything to add?
Well, my big issue is, right off the bat, is traffic. And you mentioned like a path all the way to New Hudson.
Yes.
What about the road? And we do, even though you're correct, and if the county makes that decision, we can say, "This is what we want."
Sure.
And if they don't approve it, then we don't approve it. And that is a big issue for me. Currently, they have 12,600 car trips a day.
Yep.
And whatever you add to it is not helping matters at all, particularly at the Grand River intersection.
Sure.
I mean, that's a horrible thing. And God knows when they'll do it. And as far as the property, transferring the density from North Room property to this, I don't know, because you mentioned there are issues there. But in my mind, there's other things that can be done with those issues. They can be dealt with, including Continental, but I can't go with the density and I can't go with the roads, so I had to.
Is anyone coming out on 12 Mile at all? There's no, both entrances are only on Milford Road. Yeah, that's not good.
And frankly, we thought that was a good thing. It's a gravel road.
Yeah, I mean, a good thing would be if you could pave from Milford Road to the end of yours. That would be great, on 12 Mile.
Yeah, wouldn't the road commission require that based on the number of vehicles?
If we had an access, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know the people on 12 Mile would definitely not like that, but everybody's coming out onto Milford Road. Living by Continental for 29 years, I still think you're going to have a Continental problem.
Well, we've actually hired an environmental consultant who's looked at that, and his conclusion is the Wall Bridge property won't be residential, but this property won't be impacted by Continental.
Oh, I think he's wrong. Yeah, you might want to camp out there for a while and see. Yeah, Continental's a big, big problem.
Good.
Well, I have the same concerns as everybody else that's already mentioned. You know, the traffic. I would absolutely expect you to pave 12 Mile, and you should probably have two accesses out onto that, some both through your cul-de-sacs going out onto that, and probably a traffic light if that were, if this were ever to go forward. It's way too far density, and so why don't you buy the Wall Bridge property? You already got your density. Well, I'm just saying.
So the Wall Bridge property can't be used for residential?
We already approved a development on that.
And they decided they couldn't do it?
Well, we already approved it, so.
Sean?
When I voted no on the Wall Bridge parcel to the north of you a few years ago, I lived in a different neighborhood than I live in now, and I think as a crow flies, I was about two miles away, and depending on the way the wind was blowing at that distance, I could smell the air, smell it in the air. I couldn't taste it, probably like you could if you drove down the road on that windy day, but it was definitely noticeable, and I knew exactly what it was. So to Michelle's point, anything nearby will be impacted, whether it's healthy or not. That's not for me to decide, but it's not an odor that I would like to fill my house with. If you did a PD, you would have to pave 12 Mile. You're not proposing a PD, so that, I guess, gets you out of that requirement, maybe. But yeah, the plan itself, transitional zoning and mixed-use isn't problematic, it's the amount of it. I think it was discussed that, you know, this parcel's plan to accept, I think the sewer master plan calls for 250 REUs, and you're talking about 477. And I think Leslie mentioned that, saying, "We don't even have to accept them as a sewer customer because they weren't contributing..."
Well, it's really the board's discretion, and under the master plan, it's first come, first served, who you give that capacity to when you're not obligated to serve them.
Would, can I just ask a question?
Yeah, go for it.
Do they have to pay the lateral benefit charge then, also?
No, because they would have a significant off-site expense.
I mean, that's a whole nother issue. So I, you know, we can't make a golf course stay in business any more than we can a cider mill. People have rights, like was said a few minutes ago, but... People have rights, like was said a few minutes ago, but this is, it's just too much, in my estimation, and a lot of the other concerns that were shared by everyone to the left of me, and the planning commission, and the reviewers, I share as well, and I won't dive into it again, but I'm on the same page.
I know this is a conceptual plan, and you're basically looking for a conditional rezoning to hit a certain number of units, or get that maximum density, maximum number of units, and then work through the engineering and everything, and the actual site plan comes a bit, a bit later, but I like, I like a lot of the comments that were said, probably agree with everybody here. I was also on the planning commission for that Parkside Village, and we, yeah, I did vote against that because of some of the environmental concerns. So I am curious, honestly, if you continue to pursue this, what you've been able to find out in terms of what your consultant has provided. Traffic mitigation, again, just echoing, is probably the big thing in 12 Mile road access, as Clark Cash mentioned, would be beneficial. And, you know, I guess I do have concern about the number of sewer REUs. I mean, we planned for 250 for the site, and it's, we're not obligated to serve it, the whole first come, first served basis is a concern. I don't wanna leave anybody out in the cold, so to speak, with the sewer, and then, you know, we just went through a very long process to get the water plants up to par. I don't wanna get into a situation where we then have to go back to the sewer plants and put undue stress, and have to modify those as well. So those are my comments.
Okay, and, you know, I'm not gonna beat the horse, but I do think that 12 Mile needs to be paved in any stretch of this project. And I do agree with John that the Milford Road is probably some problems at this point, lots of traffic already on that road, and anything added to it is gonna be extreme. So I, I think it's too big. I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of density on the site. If you notice more, the density part is hard to swallow. I would much like something with a lot less size. And with that, I mean, a motion would be in order to do something. Go ahead and leave it. Someone wanna make a motion?
Okay, in the case of AP 19-28B, which pertains to conditional rezoning application for fairways of Canfield, I will make a motion to deny the request based upon the comments from tonight, the planning commission recommendation and findings, as well as the review comments from CES and McKenna that were part of the packet.
I'll support.
You supported him?
Chris and I did, so pick which one.
Rock, paper, scissors.
All right, so we have a motion that stands to deny the conditional rezoning, and again, as I did in the past, I will open it up for conversation to the public. If anyone would like to come up and talk, please make it a couple minutes, please, and try not to be redundant. Thank you very much.
I'll be very brief. Eugene Wallace, 28008, Tremont, in the Mill River complex. What part of density and traffic don't the developers understand? I mean, we've been here for two hours tonight, talking to developers, and neither one of them understand what density means, or what traffic impact means. And as far as walking from this site to the downtown New Hudson, that's a mile, and the number of people that are gonna walk that path, that they're gonna make alongside Milford Road, a mile to get down to the limited, right now at least, New Hudson downtown area, is definitely minimal. They're gonna have to re-widen, or will have to widen up Milford Road, there's no way they can, they can take that much more traffic. It's just ridiculous. That's, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to step up and give us something new? Okay. Seeing none, we have a motion to deny the conditional rezoning on the table and a support, so I'm gonna go ahead and call it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion denied. Moving on, moving on to the special land use, do we have to consider that now?
No, it's moved now.
It's moved?
Correct.
Is there a statement you wanna put on the record for it?
Yeah, I would say that, given the motion to deny the conditional rezoning, no special land use is needed or warranted for the development of single, large lot, single-family residential in accordance with the zoning of that site of R1O.
If we wanna be sure, I can make a motion to that effect?
I don't think it's necessary.
You need a motion?
Yeah, I think it's just fine.
Just to put it on the record?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have that? All right. Let's move on to establishing the tentative special assessment role for general purposes in resolution number 219-21. Patty, are you taking that one?
Yeah. This is the annual special assessment role for miscellaneous assessments, which mostly are water and sewer. However, there are a few other notable ones that are listed in your packet. There's a demolition, there's a couple of grass cuttings, and a few other sewer REUs. So that's the role, you know it's gonna change before we bring it back to you in November, and then even before I actually physically roll it on the taxes, it will change again. So people are notified, Michelle will notify them, and they'll start coming off, and even the role as it exists today has already changed. So it's just a preliminary role, but we've gotta include everybody so that we don't miss anybody.
And this resolution's giving permission from the board for me to publicize the attached notice in the paper?
Anyone wanna make a motion for that resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 19-21, establishing the tentative special assessment role for general purposes.
I'll support.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to the resolution 219-22, adopting emergency operations support plan, I mean, it's supposed to be given to us by chief. Explain that.
1.4 million on the latter one, so. We're trying to get it under 1.4.
1.4, that has the, the one, for 1.4 million, has sweet rims, though.
I'll take that $5. Okay, so this is something we have to do every four years, is the supportive emergency operations plan with the Oakland County, and it's in case we have any type of disaster or any type of emergency where we qualify for grant funding assistance, and so it addresses natural disasters, technological incidents, hostile attacks, or other emergencies. This is an update from 2014, and it just requires a few signatures. Basically, it's, the names have changed to, you know, reflect the supervisor in place now, and other positions in the, primarily in the fire department.
Okay. Does everyone understand what he needs this for? Anyone wanna make a motion?
There's just, I want a, the bottom paragraph has the wrong year on it.
Uh-oh.
It just says 2015.
Oh, that's me.
On the front page, the cover page?
October 7, 2019. Resolution declared adopted, so that we have to have a date on it.
Do you want me to?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 2019-22 as amended, I guess, if we wanna...
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we have a discussion on the agenda about township-wide waste hauling. I think, John, you brought that to the attention of the board, and I don't know if you wanna go ahead and talk about that a little bit.
Well, I brought it up today, was, as it stated in here, that they were concerned about the continuing price rise. And the party that called me says hers was $87.23 a quarter.
Seven, oh, quarter.
Mine is $69.30 a quarter, but it has gone up the last two times. And I don't know if there's any interest in, the city, they have a four-year contract, and they pay considerably less base rate. Now, I don't know what they've added to it, but their base rate is like $35 a quarter. And they may add the fuel charge, but others give it, but it'd still be less than. If we decide to do that, we'd probably have to do it through taxes.
Usually, they roll it on the winter taxes. It's very common.
And I don't know if there's any interest in pursuing that any further, but we, John sent me a thing about hazardous waste, too.
Yeah.
And that, I talked to this gal last year, and we couldn't hook up later, but they're so far away from us. Rursack is close, but this is what, six, 12, at least 18 miles away to the closest dump, if we went with Oakland County's hazardous waste. So we can't get into Rursack now. Maybe he'll really push that someday, let us rejoin, but so...
Well, do you think with a community-wide trash pickup, would, I guess this would be a question if we decide to do this, or to look into it, would they let us also have or sponsor a spring cleanup for the township for hazardous waste, or bigger waste that won't be picked up by this?
They usually do.
So that might be our way to get in to help that cause also?
Hazardous waste is something different, but as far as the spring pickup, like GFL, they'll take anything every week.
Well, I just think people are concerned about the recycling of batteries, and to me, that's more hazardous waste, or computers, or things like that. So I guess if, if we decide to look into this, could that question also be asked by whoever's looking into this, if they could maybe provide a...
I don't understand the connection, but people, like GFL has a connection with Rursack for the city. But I, I don't know what that connection is, how it is. I mean, I'm sure they pay for it, but, and I would say it was certainly worth looking into.
Well, I'm, I'll just give you my opinion. I'm not a fan of waste hauling by the township, only because, you know, if you, if you wanna change because you don't get the service, that you have the opportunity to do that. Once you go township-wide, I mean, you're stuck with whoever you got. I mean, you get somebody that doesn't go to the end of the block and empty somebody's trash, and just because it's too hard to get to it, that person doesn't, that's just me. And I'm willing, you know, this is not, this is not a fight for me. If, if the board wants to look into that, we can definitely look into it, and we can definitely bring back different costs for township-wide trash pickup.
ISU has three different haulers. Two of them come on Friday, and one comes on Wednesday.
I'm, I'm in a similar feeling with John. I don't want a township-wide trash hauler. And I know that there are some people who have creative ways of dealing with their trash, especially if they're not living in a subdivision. So I think that subdivisions tend to have a plan, although I don't know, 'cause I don't live in one, but I am, I am not in favor of township-wide waste hauling.
I'm probably the only one that wants it.
No, I am too.
I really want it, because it would save everyone, and it would be so much cleaner and neater, and one hauler at a time. I mean, my neighbor across the street has someone different. I also pay almost $70 a quarter, and we wouldn't get all this dumping all over our township. Because, I mean, I know there's a lot of people that can dispose of their trash in other ways. You know, maybe you, you know, you have a partner that owns a business that can take your garbage every day, or every week, or whatever, but I, I think it would be very beneficial.
At least to look into it.
I was gonna say, if there's enough interest, I, I would try to get ahold of these companies.
Maybe just pay it one time, it's on your tax bill, done. You know, you know? And I think of the savings, I know Milford Township has it also, and it works very well for them, and they do have their cleanup.
I'm only aware of three in our area. Our own landfill won't service this area, Republic.
Yeah, the two for one. Well, again...
Well, if the board wishes, though, I'll go ahead and, and see if there's any interest in that township-wide.
I mean, I don't see any problem, and if John wants to look into that, I don't see a problem in that, bringing it back as we showed.
We're not putting you on it, we'd like to see what it looks like.
What's your thoughts?
So it's just that another component is the recycling component, that you get, if you go with a company, for example, like GFL or something like that, and, you know, you have the containers, they encourage recycling, it all goes to making the community much more green, you know, there's sort of those aspects. Because other haulers may or may not take it, or it becomes problematic, you know? The larger companies encourage it.
And yard waste, too.
And the yard waste, they take all that, so you're not burning it, and stuff like that, so.
Well, again, I don't see any reason why we don't wanna look into it.
Yeah, makes sense to look into it.
Does anybody have any problem with John looking into it further and bringing it back?
Well, I, I look at, you know, probably putting together a subcommittee to do it, and I, you know, I'd be willing to help, 'cause I'm, honestly, I'm on the fence about it. I, when this was brought up, I contacted a couple of municipalities that I work with, and one of them is literally starting their program January 1st of 2020, and they went through a pretty extensive RFP process, and interviewed companies, and, you know, sent me some information on it, and they, you know, they ended up with quarterly rates that were pretty, pretty darn good, and it included, you know, recycling, yard waste, non-call-ahead bulk disposal. So they, they ended up with a pretty, pretty good deal. I don't know if we'd be able to do it, get the same thing, but, I don't know. I mean, I guess my expectations would be, if we were to do it, then, you know, the residents would save money and have better service. I think that's the bottom line, or else there's no real point in doing it.
I'd, I'd be interested to see the, what some of the information is from the municipalities that you had contacted, because, I mean, maybe I'm looking at this, not looking at this in the right light, so at least if, if there's a plan to look at it, and it is a significant savings, then maybe...
It could probably help, too, because a number of our communities have gone that way, and done the RFP process and everything else, so we could probably help provide some information, too.
And with such a large contract and so many homes, I think it would be beneficial to them to make sure they went to the end of the street and weren't getting a lot of complaints.
They respond. When they're, when they're under contract with the municipality, they do respond. I mean, you know, if, if you get a call from the resident and they say, "They missed us," they'll, you call them, they'll send a truck back out to get it. So that's, that's the difference. I mean, they're dealing with the entire community, so they know they have to do it right, so...
Also, whoever, if they want to...
And it's a lot cheaper.
Or whoever can. I've been through Northville, and they actually have Northville on their garbage cans, so if we could put Lion Township, then people will know where they live, that they are in Lion Township. That would really help.
You don't know where you live, check your trash can.
Yeah, a lot of them drive the containers now, too. It would help to have a logo or a name on it, if we can, can look into that.
Wait, here's a good idea. If you do set a committee up, I'm not gonna be on it. So if you wanna do that, please don't count me in that one, I'm too busy.
It sounds like a good thing for John to work on, it's his idea. I'm on the fence, too, but hey.
I think John and Chris, this Whiteley...
Okay, you guys good for that?
And it's like a mess every time they do it.
You wanna look into it, John and Chris?
Come in and bid, and there's all this, yeah, it was a real nice...
Chris, you said you would do it. You, John and Chris, you two wanna look into it and bring something back? Okay, we, we don't need to form a committee for that.
I think you just did.
Okay. I'm good. I'm good. Okay, I'm good. Check out the trash. I always like looking at trash. Okay. So we got that one, covered that one good? Okay, let's move on to the eleven-mile park update. This is one that is a bummer.
Okay, so if you remember the last board meeting, the township board had the discussion of whether we wanted to continue to, to work on the eleven-mile park. And knowing that we have a large two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for a play structure. So the board gave myself, Leslie and Brian the task of going to the, the donor and ask if they would consider moving or financing the play structure in another location. And unfortunately, we couldn't meet face-to-face with the donor. And we tried very adamantly, believe me, to try to get them to. We wanted to face-to-face, but we just couldn't get that. So we had to do it over a conference call. And I think they were very displeased. And, you know, now we can't meet the timeline. And so realistically, they want to withdraw their offer from us. So that was the take that we got back. They didn't say it right then, they, they had to go to their board. And they called an emergency meeting. And they just felt that we probably can't meet the timeline. And they did not want to do it in a different location. They had their heart set on that location. And so what they are actually respectfully requesting is their, their money that they've already given to us. So I really didn't want to tell anybody until the board heard that. I know the park committee had, had mentioned it. And I think they were a little upset, but I didn't think that, I thought this was something that the board should hear first before anyone else. So it's kind of sad. I think Brian and Leslie and I were just really dumbfounded, to be honest. We really, we thought we made a really good case, maybe putting it at, you know, if we could produce safety town in a relatively manner, where we could have put it at the end of that. We offered the township park in any location there, but they just were absolutely not interested, so.
It was a very generous grant.
Oh, it was.
But we were in a really weird spot with the cost of crossing that. And I, I hope that if they were disappointed, they understood the spot we were in and that we had no idea that it was going to be.
How much, we, I mean, we, the three of us seriously talking to them, all three of us probably had tears in our eyes. We felt so horrible that, and we gave the best pitch we can. I, I mean, we just said, we'll take, we'll come out, we'll take you to all these spots. We sent them plans. I mean, we sent them all our safety town. We sent them pictures of the park. We, I mean, we really, we did a really good job on our end, is what you gave us to do. And we pleaded the case as best that we could. It just, they had their heart set on that location. And, and we, we told them how much we appreciated it. And, and I think they would consider us again in the future if that park ever, if we're able to. And Leslie sent all kinds of stuff showing our difficulty in, in that park. And so I just, again, I wanted you to hear it before the, the park board. I didn't think that was appropriate. So, you know, I told them, please let me explain it to the board in case there was any change in anything. But if not, Michelle, then I will be probably cutting the check tomorrow to them back, so.
Do you need official action from us to return?
I, I, I don't, I don't know.
It was an anonymous donation, so I would say no.
You're just returning the?
Yeah, so we will be returning that, that dollar amount to them.
We do have to decide what we're going to do with the money we generated if we're not going to do anything to that park, so.
We've got a lot of unanswered questions though with the study that we, we really can't.
Right.
Move ahead, yeah.
Yeah, well, we've, we've obtained some money from different. Yeah, get out of there. Yes, we have obtained money, but, but again, I, we did the, did we not, I mean?
And we're just really disappointed. I mean, we worked really hard and we want to see that park develop. But the flood plain is, you're going to spend all this money and it's going to flood part of it. And it just didn't make sense. And we just couldn't get it to work on the timeframe. I'm optimistic that once that is figured out and resolved, the flooding, that the donor maybe would reconsider a grant in the future. I mean, that's my, my hope honestly at this point in time. It just, it's going to take another six to eight weeks to even get the study back on the Noby Lion drain. Then we don't even know what needs to be fixed and how that's going to be funded. There's just too many hurdles.
And we were looking at seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars put a driveway, a crossing, and a parking lot in, it was going to flood.
Well, that wasn't going to flood, just the, around it.
But I mean, but I mean, it was. It was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to just get to a point where it could finish construction.
Like eight, eight hundred.
That's not real exciting. I mean, if you're talking about developing a park and phase one is just putting in a parking lot. And seven hundred thousand dollars, I mean.
And if you went off Milford Road, you're talking about a, a major road widening. So you're in the million range.
Milford Road's a non, I mean, as a safety issue, with it being in the curve there is not.
Right, crossing the drain is very expensive because your culvert just has to be so large. You have to meet all of these DEQ requirements. And your pedestrian crossing has to also cross the same drain. So it's just, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense anymore.
Then I just get five hundred thousand dollars, just kind of put the, the thumbprint on it, it just.
Well, I mean, we didn't know until the eleventh hour that we were going to be required to do this study. It was like we'd gone through all this and then the DEQ says.
She didn't even, we didn't get the permit back yet.
We don't have the permit.
We applied for it a year ago. How, how is that, I mean, we don't even have the permit, so. It's just really been, um. It's just heartbreaking because we worked really hard on it for a couple of years.
What was the total amount that we would have had to spend to get this grant? Because it was.
Two and a half.
It was two and.
Well, no.
To get, to get over the.
Eight hundred thousand.
It was eight hundred thousand again, that was the, the crossing and the gravel parking lot with the paved ADA spots.
Uh, I can't remember if it was paving the whole parking lot.
No, I think it was just paving the ADA spots.
Okay, probably. I'm looking at just the summary right now, not the breakdown. Yes, and grading the whole site.
And grading to get it to work.
Right, mass grading. And, yeah, that's what you would spend.
But we don't even have the permit.
But the sewer's all above that.
We're supposed to have the playground done.
Whatever we have to do to that.
Well, I'm just trying to make a point that the, the amount of money to spend just to get the grant was pretty high to begin with.
I mean, that's one of those things where you go do anything, where you do everything. And just put it all in and, I mean, because anything in between, the money you've got to spend just to get in there and get access is staggering.
I think one of the big picture items that I'd like us to think about moving forward is, it is a, it's a lot of money, right? Eight hundred. But I want to weigh our, our options for providing some sort of recreational facility to the middle of the township, because that is the perfect spot for serving so many people. And so, you know, we may be looking at acquisition costs that are, that approach that to serve other residents as well. So there's a bit of a balance between spending on the property that we already have and how badly we want to produce a recreational facility in that area.
Can we buy Coyote and make it a park?
That's the development rights ordinance for next week, next month.
I've read about two or three.
We think the park is over. I just think it's slowed down. I'm, I'm not sure it's over. I think it's, we may have to look at some other avenues to make it work.
The drainage issue needs to be resolved, in my opinion, you know, before you're going to invest that much money in a park and then utilize whatever grants are available. And hopefully the same anonymous donator, donate.
Donor.
You got to think about that they could have picked any one. They could have picked any project, anyone, and they did it cost. So if we can ever go back, you know, hopefully they would reconsider at that time. But, you know, they also have a board and they also have, they've got a foundation set up. So they, they themselves, they, you know, she explained it to us, that they have, they have projects and, and they have budgets. And so they're out budgeting years out of what they're going to spend their money on, and they have obligations. So we just could not continue to meet what we thought we could. It just didn't fall into place, so. Again, they were, they were so kind and wanted to be so giving to our community and to our, our children, you know, for this beautiful play structure. But we can cross our fingers and hopefully in the future, they might reconsider us again. So they're wonderful people. I mean, they're just, they were just wonderful to work with. So anyways, that's my update.
Okay, on to the last item here is the consideration of approval of the agreement for IT services between Oakland County and the township. I, I think, Carol, did you tell me that this is going all over?
Yeah, this is just a standard contract that's being sent to all municipalities for signature, so. And we do use, Leslie, or Brian responded on the services that we do use from them, so.
So they have to put that, I have to get authority to sign it.
Right, right. Just approve and authorize the signature.
So basically, that's all we're asking for is to.
So I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for IT services between Oakland County and the township of Lion to have the supervisor execute the contract.
I'll support.
All right, we have a motion and a support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.